I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. It's good to hear the pledge being said this way because usually we just hear ourselves talk. So, thank you for participating in the pledge allegiance with us. We are going, welcome everybody. We're going to get started with our board meeting. But as a reminder, if you want to participate in the unscheduled audience participation, at the desk over there underneath the flags, there's a card. Fill out that card and hand it to Angela. Angela is right here at the end of the table. And that will give you that, and she'll pass those over to us and allow you to participate in the unscheduled audience participation. Erin, will you take attendance, please?
I will. President Di Alessandro?
Here.
Vice President Schaefer?
Here.
Secretary Reese?
Here.
Treasurer Hanser?
Present.
Trustee McDonough?
Here.
Trustee Summers?
Here.
Trustee Whitney?
Here.
Thank you. There are no changes to the board agenda. So, that'll bring us to item number three, our school presentation, which I think most of you are here for. So, student arts, athletics, and academic recognition is item A.
Yes, we're going to be very excited about recognizing a number of students from each of our buildings. And I believe that if we're getting the signals crossed, they should be entering shortly. If not, would somebody yell across the hall that we're ready? And waiting, that would be good. One more announcement while we're waiting. Those of you who are holding an agenda in your hand, notice that item seven is missing. The copier just spit it out before it printed number seven. We're not sure how that happened. Right, Angela? But it's okay.
Yeah.
So, when we get to that item on the agenda, we're going to be printing number seven on the screen so that you'll be able to see the full agenda. So... Do we have students entering?
And here they come.
Ah, good.
Hear that? We're being... There they are. Yep.
Alright. Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Neme and I am the principal at Clear Lake Elementary. I'm super excited to kick us off this evening. I have two students that have been nominated at Clear Lake. And we're going to actually start with Olive Squires. She is a 4th grader at Clear Lake. And Olive was nominated. All of our students were entered by their teachers for living the Ivy learner profile. And Ms. Olive was recommended by her teacher because she said Olive really exhibits the Ivy learner profile of being a risk taker. And she said that this entire school year, she has been a risk taker with her learning and really pushing herself to do her best at school. So, that is Ms. Olive. My second stu... oh, yep. And our second student this evening is unfortunately not here, but I'm going to recognize Charlize McFarland. She is also a 4th grader at Clear Lake. And Charlize was nominated for being on the Ivy learner profile of knowledgeable. Charlize has really come along in her understanding of math. And she's actually been running some small group, math groups for her teacher. And her students, her peers have been very supported by her. And that we've seen Charlize's confidence in math just grow this year along with her knowledge. So, we recognize her.
Congratulations. I'm so very proud of you.
Alright. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm Chad Boyd, the principal at Daniel Oxford Elementary. Tonight, we'd like to recognize four students at Daniel Oxford for being open-minded and caring. These students go above and beyond to help their classmates. They are all great examples of living our school mission as caring, contributing members of a global society. Those students are?
Easton Jones?
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm actually Anita Concha Collins. I'm Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Instruction. I'm standing in today for Mrs. Glenn, principal of Lakeville, who could not be here tonight. So, I'm actually going to have all of our Lakeville friends, if you want to...
All come forward so you can get like a long time in the limelight? Come on up, all my Lakeville friends.
Yep, keep going. This is a... Don't they look so nice? They all dressed up for the occasion. I love it. Even some new shoes, I was told. So, Lakeville chose to acknowledge students who best exemplify the Ivy learner profile as well. The specials teachers, our art, music, Spanish, PE teachers, all work with all Lakeville students and they collaborated to select the following students. For being principled, Clara Umsheid. Open-minded, Emory Yuland. Caring, Ezra Davidson. Communicator, John Pedrosso. For being a risk taker, Michaela Daya. Thinker, Abby Duncan. Inquirer, Marley Tyson. Balanced, Deanna Bartnik. For being knowledgeable, Aubrey Allen. And for being reflective, Scott Lewiston.
Hi, I'm Paul McDevitt. I'm the principal at Leonard Elementary School. And I'm proud to present to you our six safety patrol captains for this year. The Leonard Elementary Safety Patrol is made up of 5th grade students. This year, we had the biggest group of students that we've ever had in the history of Leonard on our safety patrol with a total of 44 students. Some of the jobs of the safety patrol include doing the crosswalks in front of the buses, greeting staff and students, putting the flag up and bringing it down and folding it correctly at the end of the day, mentoring future safety patrolers, helping load the buses, hall monitors, working on our bulletin boards, and much more. These six students we're honoring tonight have been, or currently, are our safety patrol captains. We have a morning captain and an afternoon captain. All students in 5th grade must apply to be on the safety patrol. Each application requires an essay to be written on why they think they would make a good safety. The first two captains of the year are selected based on their essays. Once they get started, the rest of the captains are selected throughout the year for their commitment and going above and beyond. The captain's job is to oversee the rest of the safety patrol. Any problems are brought to their attention. They make sure everyone is at their posts and of course, wearing their safety belt. If there's a need for a substitute, they will assign a person to that job or they will do it themselves. These six students here tonight have shown great leadership and we are very proud of each and every one of them. First, we have Haylen Carter. Johnny Cook. Luciana Miranda. Emma Novak. Riley Parker. Liliana Schaefer. And of course, this couldn't be done without our adult support and our safety patrol. Person who runs our whole city patrol does a fantastic job with that is Mrs. Melissa Musgraves. Thank you.
Alright, guys. Well, hey, congratulations. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service to us. Thank you for being safe. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do for us.
Good evening. Thank you for having us today. My name is Jeff Brown. I'm the principal at Oxford Elementary School. One of the foundational pieces of the International Baccalaureate Program is convincing kids to take action. And the girls that are here with me tonight, completely by their own choice, partly because Ally is just super cute and motivates us all to do things. For those of you who don't know, Ally is our therapy dog that we have at OES that Jillian Jessmore is wonderfully housing. But the girls that are in front of us tonight raised over $1,600 in both cash and supplies for the Oxford Wildcat Pack. In addition to taking that action, they helped motivate others in the school and they presented their action in a whole school assembly where they stood up in front of our whole student population of 375 and shared their actions with everybody else. And so, we're both excited for their accomplishments of what they raised, but we're also very impressed that they were willing to come and share that with all of our students. And so, girls, we thank you for that contribution. Here are the students that were the key to this. Emma Hart, please come on over. Madeline Smalley. Alexis Mester. Noel Devolder. Stella Curry. Kinsey Mills. Mariah, I'm not going to get it right, Mariah Gunch. Oh, that's good. And Isla Green. Great job, girls. Congratulations.
Whoa, we forgot somebody.
Kennedy Wilson. Woo, Kennedy!
Kennedy, I apologize. Kennedy Wilson.
Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. The girls, thank you.
Oh, there it is. Thank you. Off the hook, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Bigelow. I serve as the principal here at Oxford Middle School. I appreciate the opportunity to recognize some outstanding middle school students this evening and honor them for their accomplishments. In case you weren't aware, I have standing before you the Cyborg Cats, one of our middle school robotics teams. I'd like to provide you with just a brief overview of their season and what has brought us here tonight to do a little celebration. In both of their regular season qualifier competitions, Cyborg Cats made it to the semifinals and the elimination rounds. They were chosen to be, excuse me, on December 7th and 8th, 72 teams from across Michigan attended the Michigan State Robotics Championship. They were chosen to be part of the fourth alliance in elimination play. Their alliance beat the number one alliance in semifinals and then beat the number three alliance in the finals for the Woody Flowers Division. This moved them to the inter-divisional finals where they competed against the winner of the Marie Curie Division. They won the best two out of three matches to become the State of Michigan Middle School State Champions. I know how hard this group of students works. All of our robotics teams, in fact, we have a robotics room here in the middle school. It's upstairs. They are here a lot. I know the time, effort, energy that they put in, as well as their coaches who stand up here as well. I'm extremely grateful for the program and what it brings, the opportunities it affords our students. So, outstanding job. So, members of the Cyborg Cats, we have Reese Boyd. Max Soper. Allison Zabowski.
Darren Harkin.
Dylan Miller. Caleb Horton. Connor Umsheid. Andrew Frevo. And Dave Whitney.
Congratulations.
I'm sorry, Evan, and it got stuck behind one. Evan Ruhlman.
Congratulations. Great job. Wonderful, wonderful. I can't be through that rough at work.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Good evening. My name is Alitha Van Lussen and I have the privilege to be the principal at Oxford Bridges High School. Tonight, the two students that I'm honoring is Angel Montanez and Robert Nereo. Neither unfortunately could be here tonight. They live about 40 minutes away and just to come back up this way was a lot of expensive gas. I want to acknowledge them for their focus on learning. Let me back up. For their focus on earning and just their overall excellence in behavior and attitude at Oxford Bridges. When we speak about all the opportunities that our students have, I wanted to add one that we might not think about, which is the Technical Center, Oakland Schools Technical Center. Both Robert and Angel attend there. Angel attends the Construction Technology Program and he has been nominated for the... I'm sorry. I'm nervous. Going to take a deep breath. It's going to be longer than two minutes for some of those people that are timing me. I'm kidding. Angel attends the Construction Technology Program where he has been nominated for the National Technical Honors Society. His teacher says Angel's work here is outstanding. He is a very industrious, productive, and courteous student. Robert also attends in the Automotive Technology Program. He's currently passed nine out of the 10 practice certifications and will begin his actual state search in the next week or so. These ASE certifications will make him a certified auto mechanic, which is recognized through the State of Michigan. His teacher said, "You can tell this is Robert's thing. He has knocked it out of the park. Not many students do this well." Robert also has an opportunity for job placement in a dealership. So, congratulations to my poor boy.
Hello, my name is Jordan Dennis. I am the elementary assistant principal at Oxford Virtual Academy. Tonight, we are here to, look at that power stance. What a guy. Ryan Atkins, OVA recognizes 5th grade student Ryan Atkins for his achievement in academics and his personal growth since coming to OVA this semester. Adjusting to virtual school is a big challenge and Ryan has taken off. Ryan has shown a strong aptitude for coding. He has been wonderful at music analysis and he's even painted this month's mural at the OVA lab. Ryan is creative, motivated, hardworking, and actively participates in lab activities. He loves to challenge anybody who comes to the lab in a game of basketball. He brings an exciting and positive culture and passion to the school community. He's a great friend to others and he just brings a, just such a positive vibe. I mean, just look at him. Others gravitate to him and love to learn about his latest ideas and interests. You can't help but smile when Ryan's around. Congratulations, Ryan Atkins.
Feel that smile with us.
So, good evening. My name is Janet Shaw. I'm the principal of the Oxford Virtual Academy. My colleague, Jordan Dennis, jumped in to recognize our elementary student. And we are a K-12 building, so that's why we have some kids probably out of grade order, but OVA's at K-12 building. So, we wanted to recognize both levels tonight. So, for secondary, we're really excited tonight because OVA launched its first National Honor Society. It's called the OVA Lighthouse Chapter of the National Honor Society. And attending tonight's Emily Cantu, Victoria Cantu, Richard Wilson, Lily Holyfield, Gracie Clemmons, Ethan Garner, and Hadil Bazi. So... And just really quick, their accomplishments are pretty notable. They inducted our first members. They elected our first executive board. They started a tutoring program completely organized by members. They adopted two families at Christmas and I know the work that went into it because I bought the wrapping paper and delivered the gifts with Mr. Crane. And there were a lot of them. So, it was pretty impressive for such a smaller group in the first chapter. They started snack carts at the OVA lab as a fundraiser. It's going really well. We have soda and all these goodies and it's been a really great thing for their fundraising campaign. They conducted a paddle and can drive in the fall and are currently in the middle of another one. And they will be partnering with Oxford Open-handed going forward. So, congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Asia Beasley. I am the principal of Oxford High School. And I have a couple different groups for you this evening. First off, I am hopeful that many people in this room enjoyed our musical this year, The Little Mermaid. And so, yay. And while I could not bring every single person here who was involved in that great production, I wanted to bring you some representatives of all of the different areas that went into this musical. So, on behalf of the actors, I have Mr. Xander Brown. Xander was Sebastian, if you remember. So, Sebastian was supposed to be accompanied tonight by Ariel, but she is at work. So, Ms. Heidi Allen and Xander really led as senior leadership in that acting group. Did such a phenomenal job and were such instrumental, obviously, players to that production. They could not do it though, just by themselves on the stage. And so, representing the Pitt Orchestra tonight is Ms. Alison Hep. And Nora Chaffa also. I had asked her to come. She's playing softball for the Wildcats this evening and couldn't be here. But Nora and Alison represent the Pitt Orchestra. Lots of work behind the scenes, under the scenes, to present just such beautiful music for our actors and our singers to accompany. So, I want to thank you, Alison, on behalf of all of us, for the work of you and your orchestras. Tonight, Aubrey Greenfield couldn't make it, but Aubrey is one of our seniors who is the stage manager. And she has put, she has been behind that stage directing traffic for, well, all four years, I believe. And she has done such a great job. And so, I didn't want to have this evening go by without recognizing Aubrey and all of the work that she does. And then, we couldn't hear the singers or we wouldn't be able to hear the music without the help of our audio folks here. So, Matthew Barkman and Josh Curtis represent some of the behind the scenes that go on. And I want to let you know that it's not just the musical that Matthew and Josh represent. They are, have been behind the scenes of every performance, everything that goes on in the Performing Arts Center at our school. So, if it's a musical concert by an elementary group, they're working on assemblies and things like that. So, Matthew and Josh represent the behind the scenes work of our students as well. Thank you. I want to continue with our arts group. If I could invite McKenna Weaver and Kaylee Wojcik up. So, in the areas of the arts, it's not just our musicians and our theater and our dance, but it's also our visual arts. And so, McKenna and Kaylee have spent a lot of time at our school in the arts department. In fact, they're both seniors and they're both going on to school to study art. Kaylee will be going to the Creative, or the College for Creative Studies, CCS. And McKenna is going to Brigham Young University. And McKenna just won a regional gold key. If you know anything about art, that's a really big deal. And Kaylee has received over $100,000 in scholarship for CCS. So, both of them have done a phenomenal job. Next up, I have some athletes for you. So, our winter athletes. We're going to first invite two out of the four all-state wrestlers. And what you might notice and you might think is a little different, like this is our first. McKenna Bouvet and Cheyenne Frank are our first two girls to place in the state at the Girls Wrestling Championships. And Cheyenne is a freshman and she placed 5th place at Ford Field, represented our Wildcats so well this year. We're really proud of Cheyenne and McKenna. McKenna was 7th place. And so, all-state athlete, all-state wrestler, Cheyenne. And this is Cohen Everhart. He is a senior. He was a runner-up at the regional championships and also was 8th place in the state going on to college and wrestle. And this evening, one of our freshmen, a 7th place all-state athlete, Gavin Lewis, he is playing baseball tonight for the Wildcats. So, could not be here. But we're really proud of our winter wrestlers and our all-state athletes here. Congratulations. Extremely proud of our swim team. They placed the highest ever in Oxford High School history this year at the Boys Division One Swimming and Diving Championships. They were 10th in the state class, Division One, a very, very big deal. And so, tonight, I have the medley relay team. We have Olin Charonstrom. We have Chris Jasper. We have Jake Olheiser. And we also have, oh, Preston. Preston Mueller here. They were 12th in the state, so second team all-state. And Preston, raise your hand, Preston. Preston was also second team all-state in the 100 Fly. And Olin was 4th place in the 100 Freestyle. And drum roll, please. Someone. Olin also was a state champion for us and our first ever state champion in the 100 Backstroke. So, extremely proud of her. So, it's not just the swim team that we recognize in that winter sport. It's also diving. So, swimming and diving, it makes up one of the events, but couldn't be better represented, I would think, in our diving competitions. This is Liam Pearson. He was 3rd this year. He comes back next year, as do Olin and just Olin and Chris. It's over. And Liam was 3rd in diving and did just such a great job. Record breakers all around here. It wasn't one, I don't think there was one meet that I didn't come back on the announcements and say we had a record-breaking performance. So, just such a great job by our swim and dive team this year as well. Thank you. I should mention that I could have picked any of these students to be, to focus on their academics as well. They are true student athletes and student artists. But tonight, representing the area of academics, I have Mr. Dylan Morris. Dylan is a senior. You may recognize him recently in the last year. He's been a very big part of No Future Without Today. Dylan started his leadership early on at... Dylan started his leadership early on at Lakeville Elementary and honed his skills, I might say it, here at Oxford Middle School, dabbling in leadership. But also, he is part of orchestra. He takes AP and IB courses. Dylan is 99% sure?
I think so.
You think? Well, he's going to Harvard. So, we're really, really proud of Dylan. Most recently, he spent his spring break not on the beach, not, you know, in warm places, but he was actually on Capitol Hill and trying to, working hard to introduce a new bill. So, not a bad spring break for Dylan Morris. Thank you, Board, for recognizing me at Oxford High School. Can we give a shout-out, too, to our coaches and our parents who support these great students, too? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have Item B, which is Teacher of the Year and Support Person of the Year. Ryan?
Good evening, Board. It is my honor and pleasure to be here tonight to speak to you about our teacher and support staff persons of the year. Every year, Oxford Community Schools participates in the Oakland County Outstanding Teacher of the Year Awards. This annual recognition is presented to Oakland County teachers and support staff members who have achieved, through their effort and example, the highest standards of excellence in their profession. Here at Oxford, each building nominates two candidates, one teacher and one support staff member to be considered by our district administration before being submitted to Oakland schools for consideration at the county level. Oxford's district administration selects one teacher from the elementary level, one teacher from the secondary level, grade six through 12, and one support staff member. This year, three Oxford community staff members were selected to move on to represent our district at Oakland schools. And as I call your name, if you would please join me, at the elementary level, from Daniel Oxford Elementary, first-grade teacher Jessica Bull. At the secondary level, Oxford High School Career and Technical Education teacher Craig Trumbly. And as our support staff representative, Leonard, paraprofessional Amanda Sampson. I would also like to introduce to you this evening a longtime supporter of Oxford Community Schools, Mr. Wayne Haney of Haney Farm Bureau Agency. Mr. Haney, thank you for your support and generosity.
My pleasure. I promised her I would keep it short. I promise. So, my name is Wayne. I'm the local FBI agent, otherwise known as Farm Bureau Insurance. And once a year, my team lets me out, and I get to do this, which is a huge joy. And I can't believe it. Six years ago, I retired as a teacher from Mott and North Branch. And I always swore that if I was able to get my business up and running, that one of the things I wanted to do first was to give back. And by my count, I think we've given away over $16,000 to these kinds of programs. And the young people who we just saw, they're a testament and a testimony to what you folks are doing. So, kudos to you. And I am just super grateful and honored to be able to add a small bit of something, something. The only thing, look, you don't need me to lecture to you. The one thing I'm going to say is I know teachers, and I know, I know staff. This is for you to do something nice for you. So, thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations to all staff nominated at our buildings into these three finalists. Thank you very much.
Mr. Suckley, we have Oxford Gives Back presentation.
We do. So, I am Mark Suckley. I am the director of Early College. And really, for Oxford Gives Back, I am the support person for the team. And so, we have with us Laura Merritt, who is the mentor advisor for the past six, seven years for basically our student leadership team for Oxford Gives Back. And so, I have Addie is here as well. And so, I am passing the mic because I'm just the support person.
Good evening. My name is Laura Merritt, and I am the teacher that works with our student planning committee for Oxford Gives Back. So, we just wanted to provide you with a, kind of a brief update tonight of where we are and how this year's cleanup is looking. I'm going to have Addie speak in a minute. I threw her, you know, today. I was like, you're going to do this tonight. So, she's a little nervous. So, it's going to be okay. So, this is our seventh annual cleanup. We're really excited that students do this all on their own. I'm there to help them and guide them, but this is a 100% student-driven project. And we clean lawns for elderly homeowners in the community. And it's this really amazing community service project that students lead every year. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Addie, and she's going to give you a brief update of where we are with cleanup.
Hi, my name is Addie, and I'm one of the students on the planning team this year. And this year, we have 43 homes that we're going to be cleaning. And from local sponsors, we got six people to sponsor our event. And our event is on April 22nd and 23rd. And we still need lots of volunteers. And we have these flyers if anyone is looking to sign up. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, I'm going to make a little bit of a change, and we're going to have the LOFT presentation. We're going to move it from Item 7B to current. Is that some good, Pam?
Yeah, it's great.
All right, Pam Beal.
Actually, I'm going to welcome up some of my most favorite people in the world. I'm going to, Ms. Jeannie DeSico, the parapros that work in that classroom, and, most importantly, our 18- to 26-year-old students. So, can you guys join me up here, please? So, while she does that, just to introduce them, they're the ones that are going to give you this presentation. But much like several groups that have been up here this year already, our LOFT program at the end of the year, previous, prior to COVID, did go on an overnight trip celebrating a lot of the independent living skills and employment skills that they learned throughout the year. So, we do need Board approval for them to go on that overnight trip again. So, they are going to present to you something that they put together in hopes that the next boarding meeting will approve. But honestly, I just want to take a brief. I know where time is, uh, time is.
You have much time in.
Okay. Well, so these students here are... For our honor, for our recognition of academics, their academics are, like I said, independent skills, living skills, and employment skills. And so, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our LOFT program and Ms. DeSico and you guys, who have done a lot within the community, which they're going to highlight tonight. But one thing that I really wanted to give them a shout-out for is they have started their own catering business. And I don't know if you knew this or not, but Oakland Schools campus down in Waterford, after COVID, they shut down their cafeteria. And they have been contracting our LOFT students to cater various events and conferences at Oakland schools. So, I just want to recognize them for their hard work. And with that, several of them are very nervous, but they're going to come up here and do their presentation for you.
Hi, that was very emotional. Thank you so much for having us. And we are going to start because I know what time is up here. But I put, we put this together, but I didn't do this by myself. You need to know.
Oh, you guys can. I'm just very short. Okay. My students and I and my staff all helped put this together. So, I, they do kind of want to highlight some of the things that we do. But I need to tell you that when we did go away before, we went to Chicago. We're just asking to go to Port Austin. So, if I could take them all on a train, I wish I could show some of those videos. But I just want to start, and I can go like this, by saying, one of, and she's going to talk about this, but one of the things that, and I'm going to have a slide on this, that I pride in is that these students that I have, I have for eight years. And when they leave the LOFT program, they are ready to hit this community, ready and rolling. And we have a lot of community helpers. We're doing Oxford Open Handed now. So, we are the ones that are helping there. We love that. And this whole catering thing. So, I just want to thank Oxford for just knowing us and putting our name out there and letting us in these things. So, with that being said, I'm going to start, let them start. Darian Graves.
Hi. So, the first slide is what is LOFT about? So, part of the growth in our independence includes daily living skills, cooking, shopping, PACE Lab, sensory lab, exercise, meditation, Yoda, or yoga, sorry.
I read it the same way.
And current events, budgeting, circles, tribes, and people-smart skills. And outside...
Oh, outside agency support services, like MRS, CLF, all those things that we need to be independent once we leave the LOFT program.
What is the LOFT? The LOFT program consists of young adults with cognitive disabilities from age 18 to 26. In this adult transition program, we learn how to become independent. Community awareness is a big part of the program. This is some examples of what we do. Catering for Oakland schools, how to be on the job, helping the community, fish pantry, Evergreens, Oxford Open Handed, sorting Legos, organizing and sorting clothes at the Oxford Open Handed Clothes Closet. Daily living skills will be practice, community awareness, job... Recognize?
Ready.
Readiness skills for independent. Evergreens Coffee Shop, Oxford DDA, Oxford Downtown Development Authority, doing designing. I know. But I, decorating. I'm not a big decorator, so I suck at when that comes up. Bagging items for events and gardening downtown.
All right. Why are we presenting to the Board tonight?
Good question.
We are hoping that you approve for us to go to Port Austin, Michigan. We can have this beautiful 10,000-square-foot schoolhouse that's turned into actually a mansion. It is a VRBO, and it's a great price, $375 per night.
And the gentleman that owns this is an educator. I just thought it.
Per student or?
No, per night.
Per all?
Total? Yeah. And she's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Sure, people. In our 10,000-square-foot mansion, we've got five full bedrooms, five full kitchens that are off these bedrooms, bathrooms, five full, excuse me. We've got one extra-large kitchen that can hold our whole group of gatherings. We have a finished basement that has all kinds of games and activities for the students to do. And everything is included in our price. So, alls we need to bring is ourself and some food.
So, obviously, I'm going to go through this really quick because you kind of already have an idea of what we do. But independence is what my goal is. These are like my goals. So, selfishly, this end-of-the-year trip that I do allows me to assess everything that I've been teaching all year long. Because obviously, my students can go home, and I can think they're doing their hygiene, but I really don't know they're doing their hygiene, right? Or they could say that they're looking for a job. I don't really know that, or making their bed, or anything. So, this four days gives me a chance because I am in the same house with them 24/7, watching their every move. I will know what they do and what they don't. And they will do, trust me. So, those are the things that I want to check. So, we're going to establish that obviously, independent living skills here. We're going to be socializing, have social skills, developing, maintaining relationships, which is one of our biggest growth goals that we have. So, we're going to live together for four days. We're going to share a common space. We're going to respect each other's boundaries just as if they were going to go live in an apartment. Once they leave me, they have to learn these skills and know that if they're in a room with two other people, this is how we have to proceed to be able to have relationships and have boundaries that we respect. Sharing, bonding, working as a team, collaborate together. We're going to build menus together. They all already have picked what meals they want to make, whatever they're going to prepare. There's breakfast, lunch, dinner, breakfast, lunch, dinner, breakfast, lunch, dinner. We have to do that all in this house. And I don't know if you caught that there's three kitchens plus a big kitchen. So, they can prepare and butler it to us. Anyway, and we're going to do a little bit of barbecuing. So, we're going to do grilling and a bonfire, of course. I have schedules that they go by every day in class, and I'm going to have them go by these schedules in a actual living space. So, they will have to complete those schedules and what we call adulting. Even I said it for myself because I still need that. Hygiene checklist, huge, just saying. And then, we're going to do all kinds of events that we have scheduled for throughout the day. I mean, I'm not Suzie or what's her name that was on the boat? I'm not going to be that lady on the Love Boat. Am I short in my age right now? What was her name? Julie. Julie! She's the cruise director. Cruise director! I'm not going to be Julie. I really just showed my age, didn't I? I'm not going to be the cruise director. But I kind of swore I could be the cruise director. And that, you know, my goal is just to relax and have fun. So, everything so far that we do is perfect, I think. But now, I'm going to see it all day and all night. So, love it. Eric.
What are we going to do? We follow schedule, cook meals, bake food for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Outdoor activities and take recycle out.
Make our beds, keep our room clean, place boats, hike, garner canoe, sightseeing.
Do your own laundry, do role play with team.
Team building activities, competitions, have a bonfire with marshmallows.
Have fun around the house, learn about Port Austin.
Do our hygiene.
Be independent.
How are we going to pay for this? This is Alex. Alex, this is you.
How about make the community come up here?
We recycle popouts and we get the popouts from the Oxford Boost.
High school boosters.
I don't know, make this community come up. Oxford Boosters Club and the community, and we return the popouts to Myers and get the money. And we get money from Oakland Schools and we get the money from prom and transition coordination. And we do Legos and we sort them by colors and size and shape. And we make apple pies and kel corn and snacks and crafts.
When we weren't going out into job sites, we had to stay in, but we still were thinking how we were going to develop these skills. So we met a man who owns a company, and when I say Legos, it's not, let's put a little Lego together. I mean, I got millions. And they, you never realize how many colors of Legos there actually are. So even my students who are nonverbal or don't go out in the community, they will sit all day and just make, down to like one piece in a bag. And he pays us per, every time we give him a LOFT product. So that's a good thing. Details of the trip?
Um, details of the trip. Meeting will be held at the Oxford LOFT classroom to fill out all the paperwork and discuss all the details of the trip. It will be mandatory if their child will be attending. This will also solve, serve as a question and answer session. Transports all, transporting all students and staff, personal vehicles to Port Austin. All staff vehicles are registered, inserted, and all staff is cleared to transport students. Students attending 14, staff, one teacher, Mrs. Seiko, three parent pros, Ms. Stahl, Ms. Heath, and Ms. Gillespie, two parents, Andy and Ms.
Misty.
Misty.
We've been working on that name all day, just saying, but they own the taxi service in Oxford.
And one volunteer, Ms., Mr. Mike, custodian at, over.
Depart June 6th from Oxford High School, a class, hour and a half, hours, 84 miles each way. Right in Port Austin. Check in, check out on June 9th, return to the high school. All necessary paperwork for ship, only per Oxford guidelines and protocol will be submitted for the departure.
You understand, we didn't put a time for Tuesday because I had to change it, because he said we can come whenever we want on Tuesday now. So we're going to leave in the morning if we get approved. So it'll be all day Tuesday, all day Wednesday, all day Thursday, and, but he said we had to leave by 11:00 Friday because he had another group coming.
The cost of the trip. We're going to buy all the food for June 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th. On the 6th, we'll need lunch, dinner, and snacks. On the 7th, we'll need breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks. On the 8th, we'll need breakfast, lunch, dinner, and snacks. On June 9th, we will just be having breakfast and packing up and heading back to the high school. We'll need gas money, we'll need money to pay for the VRBO, we'll need miscellaneous money for firewood, for our bonfire, marshmallows, smores, roast hot dogs, just have a great old time.
We, what we do is we cook together, eat together, plan meals together, share common spaces together, clean together, hiking, go be, go to the beach, play basketball, video games, play video games together, tournament style, do crafts, team building, activities, motivation, yoga, exercise daily, movie night and popcorn, bonfire night and music, karaoke night, winter winds, fishing, canoeing, and kayaking.
That is in there somewhere, I promise. You got your last line.
Please say yes.
Um, thank you for listening to our presentation. Do you have any questions that this time we can answer?
Anybody have questions?
Are you guys excited to go on this trip?
Yes.
Very excited. It's, it's awesome. I can't even describe it. I wouldn't do it every year if I didn't think it was worth it, and it really is. I mean, during COVID, that was a rough time, but then, you know, we had a wave that we got to go, thanks to Pam, we got to go to Echo Grove. And so in the dead of winter, with our therapy dog, for three nights, it was awesome. We got to team build all together, and we just like to be together. It's a lot, we're together all the time. It's my family. So we hope you say yes. Um, and I do, I guess I didn't put this in here, but I do have funds that we can use in our Oxford LOFT fund, which is going to cover most of it. But, um, I may have to beg and beg for a little because I do have two graduations this year, so I have to have a ceremony at some point. But other than that, I think we might have it covered. They do well. We have a couple more catering jobs coming up for Oakland Schools, so that should be good. And, um, we have a couple other things going on, well, obviously with our Legos, so we're good with that.
Very good.
I appreciate everybody listening to this. It was great.
It was our pleasure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I do have a question. Who was nervous before you started to present? Raise your hand. Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm nervous every time I come up here, and you guys did a great job.
Yeah.
So don't be nervous. It was just, it's just us. Just like Mr. Seiko said, we're all, we're all part of the family, so it's just us.
That's right, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Beal, so much for your support and all of your support.
Thank you, Pam.
Wow, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeannie.
You're welcome.
Jeannie? Jeannie?
Wait a minute.
Jeannie?
Hold your students for a minute.
Hold them for a minute.
Hold your students for a minute.
You guys, you guys, you guys, LOFT, Eric.
They're out of here. I swear. Come on back. I promise.
Come here real quick.
I won't show them where they're at.
I should drive, I heard one, here's one too.
Come on, come on, come on, come on, dash. Come on back.
We're going to go ahead and make a motion. Okay? Yes, Amanda?
Do you have some contact information? Because I find it hard to believe that most of the community is not just dying right now to donate. So where can we send them to possibly donate for your fundraiser, model drive?
Models? Right at the high school. You know what? If they let us know where they're at, we'll go get them. We're really good at that. We pick up some, a woman always donates on the Phil Road. She, she found me on Facebook, she calls me every week and donates well. Their house at the high school.
I can tell you that we do have, we do have a bin at Central Office that has a LOFT on it. So if anybody in the community would want to donate any cans, you can drop them off at Central Office and we'll get them to, to our LOFT program.
Or if they want to donate money directly, I'm sure that they could do that as well.
You can reach out to me as well. Are we taking a picture? Quick picture?
Why don't you turn around?
Let's do a quick picture and then we're going to, they're going to vote tonight. Did you guys hear that?
I did. I'm so excited.
Can you guys fast up just a little bit so I can get them all in?
Seth, my bed down. Better. Can we scoot over just a little bit?
You don't bite.
All right, it's my wig. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. I would like to move to approve the LOFT, the learning opportunities for tomorrow's trip. I just, thank you for presenting, thank you for coming and bringing all your hearts and your hard work and your research and, and presenting it to us, and it just, I think you guys are awesome. And I think Jeannie's amazing and her staff, and so I'd like to move to approve the, the LOFT field trip request.
Move to approve the LOFT field trip request. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Summers.
Okay.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, discussion?
I, I just had a, I just had a comment. I just had a comment. I was so excited to hear that you're at Oakland Schools because guys, you just make the best pies, and if you haven't had a same pie on the LOFT, yeah, you need one.
So keep that in mind, because when they open that, that little cafeteria again, we want to be first on the list to run that place.
All right.
Great work, team. Thank you. Love it, love it, love it, love it.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Opposed? Going to Port Austin.
Christina, please.
Thank you.
Hard to admit.
You're a rookie in the one picture.
All right. So that puts us to item number four, the superintendent's report. Dr. Markovich.
Well, and I'm going to introduce Steve Wolf, who's going to try to outdo that. Steve, I'm glad it's you following that and not me.
My goodness, I'm still going to think it, how do you follow that group?
I know it, I know it. But, um, we have completed the bullying survey that, um, we have mentioned frequently that we were going to have done, and we have those results. Steve is going to get the highlights for you tonight, and I know that some of you on the board is going to want to see all the raw data to all the questions. Yes, I'm not pointing to anyone, but, um, so.
I'm not looking at anybody in particular.
Right, we're not looking at anyone in particular. So after tonight, we will also send the entire set of raw data, question by question, to you. But Steve, go ahead.
Well, I guess we're going to really shift gears here. So we had seven of our buildings administer the Oveas Bullying Survey in March, and that included Clear Lake, Oxford Elementary, Lakeville, Leonard, Bridges, OMS, and OHS. And this is a survey done nationally, given to students in grades three through 12. So we just got done getting those results. We put this presentation together to just really kind of skim the surface on some of the key points in the results. It is not going to cover all of the questions, because that would include 42 questions and even some sub-questions within them for seven buildings. So you do the math on that, there'd be a lot of information to share tonight, and we're not going to do that. We are happy to provide the full results from each building to you after tonight. That way you can do a deeper dive and follow any detailed questions you might have about each of the building or the district overall. So Sean Marshall, who is off to my left here, is our data specialist in the curriculum department, and she has done an outstanding job helping to aggregate and pull this data together. She is fantastic. So she's worked pretty hard and quickly here with the results to get them up and share with you. What is Oveas? Well, it's Dan Oveas, who is a Swedish Norwegian psychologist who worked at the university level in Sweden in the 1970s and 80s, and he pioneered research on bullying and bullying prevention in the 70s and 80s, and eventually conducted the first systematic study of bully intervention and intervention programs in the 80s. And then that made its way from Norway to the United States in the mid 90s and really kind of picked up steam at school and district level in the early 2000s. Oxford, I believe, adopted this program back in the 2015, 2016 school year at Oxford High School and then Oxford Middle School. And then following that in successive years, some of the elementaries had picked up that bully prevention program. So it's been around a little while at the secondary level, a little more recent at the elementary level. So this questionnaire is historically taken every two years by design per the organization. We last gave this survey in 2018. 2020 was interrupted by the COVID shutdown, so we were unable to take that survey. We generally give it in the spring, and that's the time of which we were shut down. The next opportunity then was in 2022, last school year. However, we had our focus, obviously, in some other areas in the spring, and so we did not take that survey. We did roll that question around in our head, should we take it? But we had really shifted all of our attention to the recovery and the needs of our students in other areas. So we did not give it last year. We were able to take it in that off by annual succession this year, this last March, and that's what we're going to go through today are some of those results. So this questionnaire is anonymous, so students don't report their, their names, but they do share the grade level, their race, ethnicity, et cetera. It's a multiple choice questionnaire, and it's designed to measure a number of aspects of bullying in schools and school districts. The results are used to assist at the building and district level in planning bully prevention education, also evaluating those programs year end after year, and redesigning supervision in targeted areas based on what the results share. So the survey really does two things. It shares with you and gives you insight on what bullying might be taking place, with whom and where and what frequency and what types of bullying. But then it also is used as a program evaluation in itself, based on how you're educating students and staff on appropriate behaviors, how to be aware of bullying, how to report bullying, how to be an up standard, quote unquote, versus a bystander just watching. And this results in the data helps us identify those trends throughout each of the buildings. So it can be also used in succession with other school climate surveys, which we do intend to do here shortly with some district survey just sent out recently. And again, it provides a baseline data to measure. I would almost say this is, this is almost like a refresh in a baseline data in itself because we've had such a 2020 was interrupted by the COVID shutdown, so we were unable to take that survey. We generally give it in the spring and that's the time of which we were shut down. The next opportunity then was in 2022, last school year. However, we had our focus obviously in some other areas in the spring and so we did not take that survey. We did roll that question around in our head, should we take it? But we had really shifted all of our attention to the recovery and the needs of our students in other areas, so we did not give it last year. We were able to take it in that off by annual succession this year, this last March, and that's what we're gonna go through today are some of those results. So this questionnaire is anonymous, so students don't report their, their names, but they do share the grade level, their race, ethnicity, et cetera. It's a multiple choice questionnaire and it's designed to measure a number of aspects of bullying in schools and school districts. The results are used to assist at the building and district level in planning bully prevention education, also evaluating those programs year end after year and redesigning supervision in targeted areas based on what the results share. So the survey really does two things. It shares with you and gives you insight on what bullying might be taking place with whom and where and what frequency and what types of bullying. But then it also is used as a program evaluation in itself based on how you're educating students and staff on appropriate behaviors, how to be aware of bullying, how to report bullying, how to be an up standard quote unquote versus a bystander just watching. And this results in the data helps us identify those trends throughout each of the buildings. So it can be also used in succession with other school climate surveys, which we do intend to do here shortly with some district survey just sent out recently. And again, it provides a baseline data to measure. I would almost say this is, this is almost like a refresh in a baseline data in itself because we've had such a long period since we've given it and we've had such an interruption in learning at each building level due to COVID and then last year's tragedy. So some of the results may reflect that a little bit. Overall, nationally, the trend, they are anticipating that overall bullying will likely go up based on students being removed from the school environment, being removed from their peers, those peer groups and kind of losing a little bit of sense of how to interact and be kind and friendly to one another. So we are going to start first with Oxford High School and we're gonna go into a little more detail with the high school and the middle school and then we'll go in less detail with Bridges and the elementaries just to keep the, the presentation at a decent length here. So this table right here shows a frequency of students, both boys and girls combined, being bullied or not based on the grade level and compared to the last survey date from 2018. And so I'll give you a second to glance over that, but you can see a slight increase in most grade levels for students not bullied compared to 2018, which is good data for the high school in general. There's some slight variance whether it's above or below this current year compared to 2018 with bully frequency ranges across the board. But overall, that top row, not bullied, we see overall an increase, which is a good thing to report for the Oxford High School. So the table and the graph here focus on the various ways of bullying, girls and boys combined, in the two to three times a month or more range. So when students answer that question, they have some options. I'm not bullied, I'm bullied once, I'm bullied two or three times, multiple times, et cetera. Gives kind of a Likert scale for students to select. And so what this chart and graph does is it combines any students who chose two, three or more throughout that survey of their frequency of being bullied. And so you can see again, a slight increase in most grade levels across the board. Now, Oveas only provides the national average, which in the graph to the right is that yellow diamond for some of the questions. So you won't see that across the board there in quite a few of the slides that we have here tonight, but by sheer number of those questions throughout the 42-question survey, there's not very many that give you the national comparison of the average to share with. That national average from 2018 is the results of nationwide trends for 2014, 15-year. Kind of confusing, but they go back from a few years prior to put that 2018 national average together. And then for 2023, they combined the 2015 to 2019 results across the country to develop a national comparison or an average. Okay, so that's not the 2023 national average. They haven't aggregated that data altogether. So it's a little bit confusing. I just wanted to note that because you'll see some differences throughout the slide that don't necessarily match up. You may catch that. All right, so the 2023 national average was calculated. I went over that. Other student behavior suggests bullying and other trends may increase. We've received that in some of the reports. OHS here is much below the 2015, 19 national average. On all measures in grades nine through 11 have experienced a decrease overall compared to the 2018 results. So some more good news there if you're looking at the graph off to the right from 2023. So graph seven here also focuses on the various ways of being bullied. Again, two to three times a month or more. It combined different selections. It shows a comparison of boys in green and girls in blue, but that's for 2023 only. Keep in mind, the questionnaire doesn't require students to answer every single one of these selections. So if you added those percentages up, they might not add to 100%. Depends on if, if some kids selected or not. Most did, but not 100% of those students. You can see OHS is much below the 2015, 2019 national average. I'm looking at the wrong slide here, sorry. The, the big things that jump out in this graph here, the exclusion amongst boys versus girls, the rumors and a few other areas that pop up. So that's some data at the high school that they're gonna be looking at. Each of the buildings has different teams that are getting together, some of which have already started to go through the data and start identifying some trends. And then of course, looking at their advisory lessons, their PBIS programs, their SEL programs and where do we wanna start targeting some certain areas and revisit with our students what those expectations are and work with our staff to better help identify and work on some of these behaviors across the building. So this table or this graph here shows where the bullying has occurred at the high school for students who reported being bullied once or twice or more. It's a combined number. And the percentage of the students who reported being bullied in various places. And so you can see the hallways was the biggest reported area for the high school this year, followed by the lunchroom and then in class coming in third place. This table and graph here shows us a percent of bullied students, boys and girls combined, who have reported the behavior of bullying to various people. The table on the left compares the 2018 to 2013 difference, but then the graph on the right is only for the 2023 data, which shows that most recent national comparison. So compared to that national average, OHS has more students this year who are reporting to teachers, reporting to parents and friends compared with 2018. And you can see that OHS is below the national average. Also, we have less students not reporting bullying to those groups compared to 2018, which is good. And to improve this further, all buildings, including the high school, are gonna be placing up here this week and next week posters at some of the entrances and in the bathrooms so it's confidential where students can anonymously report. That way we can have an easier method for students where they don't feel pressured or concerned that others are worried that they're reporting the bullying. They could do so anonymously, to which we've gone through some processes at the building level on how to respond to those students reporting being bullied. So this table and graph represents empathy towards victims and described in feeling sorry for or wanting help after the fact. The table on the left shows comparison of 2018 versus 2023, while the graph on the right only shows the 2023 results. And you can see we have a slight dip from 2018, but OHS is still above the national average. Of course, we want to improve. We have different programs across the district, one of which would be restorative circles potentially to help mitigate some of these issues that we're seeing here with the empathy. So this table and graph show how often adults try to put a stop to bullying at the school as reported by students. And those options students chose, which they combined here where often and almost always staff tries to intervene. Table on the left is 2018 versus 2023 and the graph on the right shows our 2023 results. So you can see OHS is consistent with 2018, but now slightly below the national average. So this table and chart shows student isolation by sharing the percent of students who feel they have no friends or only one good friend in their classes. So not necessarily across the school overall, but in their classes. Table on the left shows 2018 versus 2023 and the graph on the right shows the 2023 results only. Here we have a slight increase in boys and girls combined from 2018, which may be the result of COVID. Today's purpose and presentation is not to, to examine the results, but merely show them to you, point out a few obvious facts. The high school has recently surveyed students on their trusted adult to help connect students with staff. This is a different question, asking students about their, their connectivity with other students throughout the building. So you're starting to see the survey goes beyond just individual bullying. It really starts to peer into a school culture and climate survey, which you can have a lot of takeaways at the building level from, including looking at some of your other programs, which would in theory support some of the bullying behavior. So this table and graph, let me see here, shows a percent of students who dislike or very much dislike school. Table on the left is 2018 to 23 and the graph on the right is for 2023 results only. So we do see a slight increase from 2018, which brings OHS above the national comparison. Overall, we currently see boys reporting they dislike school at a higher rate as compared to the girls. So that wraps up the, the high school. Again, we'll, we'll share the full graph results with the board for you to take a deeper dive into that after tonight's board meeting. We're gonna move on to the middle school here, do another deep dive and then we'll follow up with Bridges and the elementaries.
Can I ask a quick question? So you gave this to all the students during what, like advisory or?
In middle school and high school in their advisory class. In the elementaries, they selected a class during the school day where all students took it around the same time.
So I mean, unless they were absent, they took the survey? They kinda had to?
Correct, yeah. The high school had about 75% of students take the survey. We were gonna experience about seven to nine percent of students being average any given day. And then we have students in different programs who come and go at different times, which is gonna bring you below that, you know, 90-ish percent. But we did carve that timeout consistently with the expectation that every student take it. So our percent of students taking it at the high school was higher than in previous years, which is good, standing across the board at the middle school and at the elementaries. So on to the middle school here. This table again shows the frequency of students, boys and girls, being bullied or not, based on grade level and compared to the last survey date of 2018. And so overall, we have a slight increase in bullying from that last survey date at most grade levels and at the different frequency occurrences. There's no one grade level or frequency that, that really jumps out in this, in this table, but overall, seventh grade has experienced the lowest increase when compared with sixth and eighth grade. So this table and graph cuts into the various ways of bullying, boys and girls combined. This is the two to three times a month or more, so it adds some of those choices together. Table on the left is the change from last survey to this year and the graph on the right shows 2023 data only. So this change from last survey has taken OMS above the national average in grades six and eight and we see the lowest frequency rate among our current seventh grade class, which still falls below the national average. So you can see some grade level trends. We tried initially looking at, hey, let's, let's look at our sixth grade students from 2018 and let's jump ahead five years and see where they're at as a junior. There was, there was no real correlation that jumped out with us. There's a lot of variables that come into play. First of all, students mature, students grow and change, but overall, we really didn't follow one subgroup across grade levels from 2018 to 23 to see something jump out necessarily.
So Steve, I just wanna make sure I'm reading the chart right. You said sixth and eighth were above national average, but I think only eighth was above?
I apologize. Yeah, came out correct. So here we look at the various ways of bullying, two to three times a month or more. Those combined student choices shows a comparison of boys and girls and this is for the 2023 data only, this most recent survey. Here we can see more bullying takes place in the various ways indicated by girls compared with boys when we're looking at ways such as rumors. Another example would be exclusion and cyber bullying. This data is really beneficial when you're going through some of those PBIS lessons with our middle school students. The foundation of PBIS is going over and reviewing what behavioral expectations we have with students. That way they know what, what we expect of them and things we wanna work on. And this is a great data for the middle school to dive into and work on some of those lessons with students. We have our high school mentorship class, which comes to the middle school about two or three times every two weeks and they help deliver Oveas bully prevention lessons with the students. They go into those advisory classes during the days leading up to those OMS visits. They, they go through some of the lessons, they rewrite them, they revise it, they role play and then they carry out those lessons with the middle school students to kind of set the stage and the expectation for how we wanna act and behave. So modeling with the upperclassmen and themselves showing students, because they often will look up to them knowing they'll be at the high school really soon. And this is some good data to, to share with those mentorship students. So this table shows us where bullying has occurred, girls and boys combined, the different locations. And here you can see the hallways, lunchroom and in class in that order are the most frequent locations. And so again, we wanna target this behavior with our PBIS lessons. Also helps with staff supervision, where do we wanna change up where we're placing ourselves, being present, being visible, how are we stepping in and correcting if we're making observations of staff with student behaviors? So this table and graph shows us a percent of bullied students, boys and girls combined, who have reported the behavior to various people. Table on the left is 2018 versus 2023 and the graph on the right is just the 2023 data. We currently have more students reporting to parents right now compared to 2018. And we also see that OMS is about at or above the national comparison of reporting to teachers, parents, siblings and friends. And they're slightly below the national comparison of not telling anyone, all of which are good signs. Some areas for improvement in reporting would be to our teachers, which we see a decrease in 2018. Again, we're going to have some bullying posters up for students who hit a QR code anonymously, anonymously report, but we still want students to feel comfortable to go to an adult, especially their trusted adult, which is an activity that we do at the middle school and high school to see how connected students are to our adults. Here again, we have empathy, empathy towards victims and feeling sorry for quote unquote or wanting to help afterwards. Table on the left is that comparison over years and the right is the current results. And so we see less empathy overall compared to 2018. And although it drops, OMS below the national average, they're still very much in that national comparison range. Of course, we want to improve and there are various programs to which we can target some of that expectation with our students. One of the, which that I mentioned was restorative circles. The high school staff has been fully trained this year and we've made a lot of progress with the middle school staff. We intend to have all the middle school staff trained next year. That way they can implement it not just as an intervention, but also as a method to, to lay out their instruction in our content areas. It's not just to resolve conflict, it's also a way to deliver instruction and to create some connectivity in our, in our classrooms. So this table and graph shows how adults at the middle school try to put a stop to bullying, specifically in the student survey options of often or almost always. And although we see a slight drop in staff interventions compared to 2018, OMS is still right there with, within range of the national comparison. Moving on, this table and chart shows student isolation by sharing the percent of students who feel they have no friends or only one good friend in their classes. So again, not necessarily overall in the building. The left is that comparison and the right are the current year's results. And so we do see a decrease in reported social isolation, which is good. Now we're right near that national average or comparison. Now we're right near that national average or comparison. So again, left-hand side table is the comparison of years and the right side is the current graph of this year's results. So we do see a slight increase, but not a substantial change, and still right there near the national average. A little bit above in 6th grade with girls and 6th to 8th, 8th grade, girls and boys All right, so that is OMS. Bridges High School also took the survey. They don't have an advisory class. They have some similar periods throughout the day by comparison, and so we had students take it all in one day. If a student was absent in any building, we chose not to do a makeup day, knowing this survey was taken by all students and they had a good idea of it, probably some discussion amongst themselves, and we wanted to make sure the results were authentic and real time. That way they weren't spilling over for kids we were trying to get caught up and made up, especially pulling kids out of their content core classes to give the survey. We chose to give that one-time snapshot on that school day. If you recall, Bridges has a smaller population, usually anywhere between 35 and 45 students, depending on the year. I believe this year they had all but one student who was absent take the survey, which is good. This was the first time that Bridges took the survey. They had not taken it previously. It is such a small, tight-knit community. In previous years, I don't believe we thought there was necessarily a need for it, not to suggest there aren't any bullying behaviors whatsoever, but because of the environment and the connection amongst that small population, we generally don't see some of those behaviors. But we decided to administer the Bridges survey anyhow. The unfortunate thing with these results are that to keep anonymity, OVAAS, you really have to have more than 15 students per grade level hit the survey to do a grade level breakdown. Otherwise, if you have a small sample group amongst larger samples, you might be able to figure out who reported what. And that's why they had that 15 number minimum. And so, you know, unfortunately, we did have to chunk it into just one grade level. We just chose the middle, 11, as Bridges students attend grades 10, 11, and 12. The data, however, I would say suggests that probably wasn't even necessary because we do have some great results, over 91% of students reporting they have not been bullied. If I did the math correctly, we had, you know, approximately three students indicate to some extent they have been bullied, which is only a few, and it's great. So like our elementaries, I'm only going to go into a few slides, that way we can move along here and make this a little bit briefer for our remaining schools. So this table and graph focuses on the various ways of bullying, girls and boys combined, two to three times a month or more. Keep in mind, this is the national comparison for juniors on that bottom row, which isn't the representation of all grades of the students who took it. So in other words, you could assumably cut that percent maybe into thirds on average if you wanted to for the girls and boys at Bridges. And so I would suggest at each grade level, we would be below that national comparison. So this graph here shows us where bullying has occurred for boys and girls combined, anyone who reported a frequency of one to two more times. And we can see it's only been reported here in the hallways, still below the national comparison toward 2023. Okay, on to our elementaries. Are you guys still with me?
Yep.
Okay. So we're just going to go in alphabetical order here, Clear Lake. Again, students in grades three through five only were surveyed. This table shows the frequency of students, boys and girls combined, who are being bullied or not, based on grade level and as compared to last survey day from 2018. So we have a slight increase in bullying from 2018 across most grade levels and across most frequencies and occurrences. We also see a decrease in students reporting that they have not been bullying, and so there's some room for improvement here. So this table and graph focuses on the various ways of bullying, boys and girls combined, two to three times a month or more. Graph on the right is for this current year data only. And we can see 4th grade fairly steady from 2018 and still below the national comparison, but an increase in grades three and five, now above the national average in grades So last slide for Clear Lake. This is the percent of bullied students, boys and girls combined, who have reported the behavior to various people. You can see we have more students reporting to a teacher or adult compared to 2018, which now brings us over the national average. We're pretty consistent with other people or other students who have selected they reported bullying from 2018 to 23, either being above or at the national average. We can see an increase in students not telling anyone, which is below the national average. So again, there's some opportunity for some education throughout the building, some awareness Okay, moving on to Lakeville Elementary. This table shows the frequency of students, boys and girls combined, being bullied or not, based on grade level compared to 2018. You can see a decrease in students reporting they have not been bullied in grades three and four, but an increase in grades, in grade five. Can I get that backwards?
Yeah.
Four is gone. I apologize. I'm getting dizzy, Dr. Markovich, with all these numbers and data.
Yeah, I know. I think the board can actually read the charts. I don't think, you know, maybe we have to verbalize every one. So maybe just let us look at them.
Real quick question, Steve. That two or three times per month in 2023 4th grade, 0.0%, is that an anomaly or is that something that is in fact, and I see the same thing from 2018?
Yeah.
So 23, Lakeville, 4th grade.
Yeah, no students in that frequency.
Okay. So they would jump to either never banned or another time period?
Or a higher frequency.
Okay.
Keep in mind, we're without looking up the number of students, maybe 60, 70 students
Any questions on that one? Nope.
Okay. Percent of bullied students who reported bullying, boys and girls combined, to various Questions on this slide? Here we're at Leonard Elementary. This is a breakdown from 2018 to 23, the different frequency rates. Move on to the next slide. So percent of bullied students, boys and girls combined. Okay, on to our last elementary survey, Oxford Elementary. This is that grade level breakdown by frequency in the last two survey years. There's another 0% Dan. Moving on, we've got the various ways of bullying. Wait, no, we got the percent of girls and boys, two or three or more. So this is our last data slide for our last school. And overall, we certainly have some areas that we've remained above or better than the national comparison in some areas where we've fallen below or historically been below. Our standard isn't necessarily just the national comparison. Of course, we want to be below it, much, much more below it and have better data than that, but we're also comparative to ourselves, which is the purpose of the survey, to look at your own results, to make your own program changes and improvements at your own building. So you're really comparing the data of yourself to make those changes. And so again, as I mentioned, buildings are going through this data and looking at their current programs in areas they want to put some focus into. And this does spill outside of just their bully prevention programs. It does spill into a lot of the work they do in the classrooms and building-wide for their school culture and climate. That was a lot. And I got a bit tongue-tied, so I apologize.
It's okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I do have some questions.
Mike?
I think a lot, some of those, I'll wait for the raw data, because that might answer a couple ones I wrote down yesterday. But as far as like the national average, when you sent the email out, can you explain that better as far as the 2023? I noticed across, just across the board, comparing the elementary schools, specifically telling a teacher, reporting to a teacher. Clear Lake, at first, it being the first, right, it kind of blew it out of the water, but I noticed it was really low in 2018. So it had a 30% jump, but it was, it was low and the other schools kind of flipped that. And so it's just interesting, maybe it was something they're doing or maybe some, you know, certainly they made a great improvement, jumping 30 percentage points, but I see that some of the other schools seem to flip that. So interesting, I was thinking kind of awareness, just in general. That's by high school, it seems like making it aware, making it okay, but we'll see.
The 2018 results were more recent to some of the assemblies held at the elementaries, where we would come in, even bring some of the high school kids again, who would work with the middle school students to kind of either launch it or revisit it, just raise some awareness around it, how it's not cool, and this is not what we do here, kind of setting that tone and that expectation. We haven't had assemblies in the last two school years. That may have some of the impact on it, but there are certainly some program questions within the buildings as well to look at.
Okay. The, will the raw data show what percentage of students answered each question?
So there's, the raw, raw data is not organized all that well. When they send it to you, we didn't make that additional request. It would, it would take weeks and months to go through and try to really aggregate that data. They only give you a percentage of those who took the survey by grade level, not necessarily by each individual question. So if you had 100 kids take the survey in its entirety and five kids somehow didn't choose to select question three, it won't necessarily show you that.
Because I was looking specifically, from what stuck to me was graph seven on high school, and that it looked like the boys, that's where bullying was, or no, sorry, the type of bullying. It looks like the boys only reported like 30%.
It does not have 200.
Not at all. Like, no, dang close, right? Whereas the middle school, it's like 90, it's like 80, high 80s, right? So I was just curious. Is there an anonymous way for students without cell phones, specifically the middle school, to report?
Yeah, as well as the elementary. Elementary students won't have a cellphone within. These posters were done at the board office, so they're very well-designed, and they have a QR code. That doesn't help students who do not have a cellphone. And so, middle school students and elementary students raising that awareness through their advisory class of who to report to, how to do so confidentially if you have an issue, inviting that space for them to know how to do it.
It may be a box in the office, it may be something in a media center. Every building has to kind of sort out what would work best for them.
Okay. Hi, Karen.
So just looking through particularly the elementary data right now, I think I would be curious to see what a roll-up between buildings looks like, because it looks like we have some buildings that didn't dip down and some that did. And I guess when you guys are going through and developing plans, you know, obviously things are working better at some schools than others. The other point would be, in general, and this is for anyone working on the plan, is like things like the posters are rolled out or other interventions, I think it's important that there's a communication plan that's wrapped around all of these initiatives that are being done, because if our families at home don't have awareness as well, now, we can't force them to read the emails or to look at the things, but if we've given them information. And then just to pivot off the cellphone comment, most middle schoolers have Chromebook, right? If not all of them, there should potentially be a little gray on their desktop.
Chromebooks can take a, you know, QR code screenshot.
Yeah.
We talked to students beforehand, and I think the bathroom stalls were like the number one place I recommended, because it's private, no one's going to see you do it. We don't let students unfortunately bring their Chromebooks into the restroom.
I mean, like on their desktop of the Chromebook?
Yeah.
We also talked about.
A light break there, yeah.
Yeah. I think an elementary dashboard roll-up, I guess, when you send the data, that would be helpful, because sliding through all the slides, I just kind of cross-checking all those things. And it would be interesting if a Wayless could, because the dips in the elementary level are, some of them are pretty substantial, to see if they can give us at least the 2023 comparison, not the 20, the national average, which is taking data from pre-COVID.
Pre- COVID, yeah.
Right? Because I think that's, just statistically looking at it, that's probably where a lot of those dips have come from, is the interactions of children that missed a great deal of school.
Yeah. We don't have an indication of when that national comparison will be generated, or it'll be more recent, but we hope that'll be pretty soon.
I think the other thing that, I mean, obviously, information is going to lead a lot of the planning, but the one thing it does point out and makes it clear, which is kind of the way we've been doing it since we've been trying to do it, is that every building, even in some cases, every grade level is different. And we're probably not going to find a solution that is, you know, one glove fits all hands here. It's probably going to be the kind of solution that's more targeted, and as you said, borrowing from places where we seem to have better results and places where we, where we don't. And, and I don't know how long it would take Sean to do. And, and I don't know how long it would take Sean to do the elementary roll up that you asked. I'm not sure we can get it out to you tomorrow, like we can get out the raw data. But I will tell you that everywhere else I've ever worked, I have been anointed the data queen, but I have given my crown over to Sean from this point on. So I'm sure we can eventually do that, but I bet when we row it off, roll it up, I think what we will see is that in every building, some things went up, whereas other things went down. And in each building, that's different. So I, I think we're going to also find a lot of variability there, which will help our teachers as they collaborate with each other across buildings, help our principals as they collaborate across buildings. But I think we're on the right track, having targeted specialized interventions, building by building, age group by age group, rather than trying to solve this in one fell swoop.
Any other questions? Mary?
No comment, thank you. Thank you for the, thank you for the data, Steve, because we have to start, we have to know what we're, what we're addressing before we can start addressing anything. And to Aaron's point, I think it's really difficult to even compare these two years. I mean, I think these are just totally, these are very different points in time and in culture. You said that every two years is the schedule to do this?
Correct, yeah.
And you think that's, do you think if, like that's how the programs run, could we do this in another year or would the data just not even be good? Because we haven't had enough time to, to fully implement the programs? I, I'm just not.
I think if you were starting it fresh, brand new, it had never been introduced, you'd probably want to wait two years at least to see that rate of change. But this has been around for a while and we certainly had some lap in, in learning in our programs, which may suggest for some of the dips, but it's not a brand new program in itself. So if we chose to do it next year, it would be a cost. That's something we would factor in to say, do we want to see that year end over change based on the changes we put in place?
Yeah, and if you, if we think it would be helpful, I mean, if it's not really going to give us good data, I don't want data just to have some more numbers.
I think it'll give us good. I think it'll give us good data in terms of, it'll give us data in terms of what change have we seen in one year. And when you're trying to do an intervention and get some movement, I typically prefer annual until we get to the point where you're pretty much seeing a trend going in the direction you want. And then maybe after that is established and you feel secure and confident about it, then you can start maybe going every other year. So I, I think my preference next year will probably be to do it again. But that's one of the things that every building will, will look at as they look at their results. But that would be my tendance, my, if you asked me to decide tonight, that would probably be the decision. Unless something else occurs to cause that to change. Am I out of time?
You know, it's for me, Vicki.
Well, and I think that would help us to, as you, as you mentioned at the beginning, I mean, we're really establishing a new baseline here. So that will help us start with some trend data, because this is, these are just snapshots. So it could have just been how people were feeling on that day. So, but I appreciate, I appreciate all the data because our work is data driven. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
I, I do have one question. It's, it's my assumption that we're going to use this information to build out some of our PBIS strategies moving forward.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, item number five, we do not, we did not have any, anybody request to speak to an agenda item, so we're going to go by that. And item number six, there's the consent agenda, which is minutes of March 14th, our regular meeting, minutes of March 14th, our closed session meeting, our bills payable, and our new hire recommendations. There's a motion. Somebody like to make that?
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there support? Support James? Any discussion? I did want to point out one thing I asked Connie today. I noticed that that, that March bills payable number was about a couple, two or $3 million higher than what we typically are. And just for clarification, and she explained it really well, so even I could understand it. So the state gave us a MIPS payment of $4 million, which we will make payments over a period of the remainder of this calendar year. But 2 million of that, or 1.8 million of that came this month. So we'll see, we'll see the remainder of that come off from now until the end of the calendar year. So if you go through your, your, your bills payable, it'll be in that, where you'll see a MIPS amount paid to the district of $4 million. And then it comes right back out in a total, but it was actually, just it's a little under that we have left to pay is 1.8 million. So that's why our March bills payable, it was up a couple million dollars.
Something ask for the vote.
I know, yeah. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes? Of course. Item seven, there is a, it was presented, last board meeting, a field trip for the football team. And there's a motion. Can I have a, would somebody like to make that motion? Mary?
Move to approve the Oxford High School varsity football trip, field, football field trip request to Covenant Hills Camp, July 24th through 26th, 2023.
Is there support? Support Amanda? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we've already done item B, which is the loft presentation. And thank you again for that great presentation. It just goes to show you the, the, the effort that this district puts into every student in our district. So I'm very proud of that and we should all be, and our community should be proud of that. If we could have a five minute break and we'll re, we'll come back to the table at 8:35. Is that good?
That'd be great.
All right, thank you. Thank you for allowing us that brief five minute break. Yeah, we're going to have a slight change in the agenda to move our presentation from Lighthouse Connections Academy. We have, we, it was presented at our last board meeting and we have a board member approval that we need to do. We have three folks from Lighthouse, our partner, and we want to get them in and, and out of here. It should be just a quick presentation. So we're going to do that real quick and then we'll jump back into the, into the, into the agenda.
All right, so the first item is the, the third board member. I spoke about this last month, but we need to do the same type of thing that we did before. But this is for Charles Wandsdale to be approved to be part of the Lighthouse Connection Academy Board.
Yes, there is a motion. Go ahead, Heather.
Move to appoint Charles Wandsdale to the Lighthouse Connections Academy Board of Directors as recommended.
Is there support? Support Mary? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next item with Lighthouse Connections Academy is they are going through their reauthorization and as our partner, as we're their partner, I have Beth Chandler here to present a little bit about that.
Okay, thank you.
Hello?
Hi, everybody. I am, actually am not, I am your Director of Charter Schools. So I am an Oxford person and then brought along a couple folks from Lighthouse Academy and Pearson. So I, just a quick little overview for you guys to clarify things and offer you the opportunity to ask any questions. In 2018, Oxford schools had the vision and foresight to authorize Lighthouse Connections Academy. And over the past five years, they have served, they currently serve almost 2,500 students that represent 1,700 families across the state of Michigan. These are Oxford District kids. And so this arrangement between a public school and a charter school is one of about 10 in the state. So it's a little bit rare, but, but it does happen. And I just wanted to let you guys know that you should be proud of the impact. I'm watching tonight in this meeting, the impact you're having within your district has just been like, I wished I had Kleenex with me because it's just really moving. What's happening here with Oxford, but you guys should be proud of what you're doing across the state through Lighthouse, through your charter of this online school. Lighthouse, in partnership with Pearson Virtual Schools, who is one of the most experienced, successful and reputable educational service providers in the country, has been offering this educational experience for the last five years to all those families I mentioned. And in fact, the 2021, 22 Parent Satisfaction Survey indicated that 93.3% of their families would recommend to another family who doesn't have a student at Lighthouse to enroll their kids there. So I think that speaks volumes, as does the fact that one of the board members you appointed last meeting is actually a parent. It's been her first year with a student at Lighthouse who's a special needs student and she has been so blown away by the, the culture and the, the support that her child has gotten, that she decided to get on board and be a part of the organization. So I think, again, those things speak volumes to the impact you guys are having by this authorization. I did bring along Brian Pearson, who is with Pearson, he's the Director of Schools. And Teresa Woods.
I'm not part of the family, Brian Austin.
I'm sorry, Brian Pearson, Brian Austin. Yeah, right. And then Teresa Woods, who's the school leader at Lighthouse, basically the superintendent. I've been working with this team and, and all the folks around them this year for their reauthorization. They're up for another five year authorization. And Doug McNeil also was hoping to be able to be here remotely, but we didn't have that capacity tonight. So he said to let you know, he is your special counsel as authorizer to this charter school. He has been in that role with you for the last five years and has been guiding the development of the contract that you received, that you'll be approving tonight, if all goes well. He also said, if, if you have any questions for him, I can contact him and make sure you get those answered before the charter is actually approved and sent off to MBE. So if those questions come up. I just, yeah, wanted to add some more positive, just that the, Lighthouse is a stellar example of an organization that really strives to be the gold standard in what they do. Anything, there have been a lot of shifting. Dr. Markovich is new, I came on under Ken Weaver. So I was new to them, Dr. Markovich is new to them. Teresa's relatively new to the school, so there's been a lot going on. And so I think they have felt maybe like they're kind of chasing their tails. We're requesting this and that, and we're doing board members this way now, like we're supposed to. But incredible responsiveness, resourcefulness, great team. So I unequivocally recommend the approval of their five year contract and reauthorization. In the what to expect category, after you approve the contract, it's going to be approved Thursday at the Lighthouse meeting and then Oxford will send it through the GEMS system, which might be great to you guys, but send it into the Michigan Department of Ed for approval there. And they may have some questions, but Doug, between Doug and Brian and Teresa and the whole team will make sure that those are answered and, and that this proceeds. Any questions for me or either of these folks that are here or for me to convey to Doug? I know there was some hefty paperwork.
Was a little.
Yep. In, in, in the application, but that just goes to show how thorough.
Light reading.
Light reading, yes. How thorough this group is.
Is Jay still with your organization?
Jay Redden, he is now, as of the year.
Okay.
I will soon.
One of the first questions when you came to visit me was, what's our completion rate? Right?
The graduation rate, Teresa?
Yes, our graduation rate's about 75%. We have decided to implement some initiatives, we hired and created graduation coaches that are working to increase significantly our graduation rates. And we had our first one in for about six weeks now, and she's making a huge impact, directly working with those students, directly working with those families. So I really look to see some great improvement. We're also having our very first in-person graduation here in June, so we're really excited about seeing that and then being able to see kind of the fruits of those initiatives moving forward.
Well, I'm always excited to hear about continuous improvement. But I will tell you, for a virtual school, 75% graduation rate is very, very good. And I'm very proud because I was a 1994 Pearson user in Illinois. So I go way back. It's way better now.
What was the total students you said?
25.
Almost 2,500.
Almost 2,500. That's grown a lot too.
Yeah.
From when we started five years ago.
Absolutely.
For, for context, the school actually ballooned up to about 3,500 during the pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
And has settled back and the projection for September 30th is right around that 2,500 number. So they anticipate much, they, they, I think.
And that's K through 12?
Uh, K through 12.
They added about 1,200 in about four months' time.
Oh, I bet.
And now growth is close to about 5% here.
I bet.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a motion. Would somebody like to read that? Or make that motion, Mary?
Move to approve the Oxford Community Schools Board of Education Resolution approving the reauthorization and the 2023 through 2028 Lighthouse Connections Academy contract as presented.
Is there support? Support Heather? Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go back to our regularly scheduled meeting. And that gives us the Honor Health Grant presentation, Mr. Barless.
Thank you, guys. So as we revisit the Honor Health Clinic partnership overview, I want to just run through our slides and then answer questions. Our first slide here really references where we started back in October of 2021, identifying needs in our community for both, well, for, for a school-based health clinic. And that was based on our MiFi data and some other components of needs in our community with under-resourced groups and demographics within our schools. At that point is when we started to explore this opportunity through Honor Community Health and accessing a grant through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So that was back in October 2021. And we've kind of moved through that process. And last August, we tabled this because there was some construction that needed to be done on a clinic. And it was going to be very challenging to complete that construction within a timeframe with students returning to school and staff in the middle, in those buildings. So, or at the high school specifically. So we are bringing this back, revisiting it tonight. The purpose of the clinic is really stated here. We, we want to address the physical and psychological needs and the safety and wellbeing of our students throughout the district. That is a core purpose of a school, the school-based health clinic. The clinic being placed at the high school really can serve students 14 years old and up. I did reference the mental health code here and I wanted to really take the time to clarify that the legislative language in that mental health code states that we may service those 14-year-old and older students without consent from parents. However, as. However, as we've discussed with the board at different times, that's a "may." As we move forward with the process, my recommendation, and as we work with our advisory groups in the community, would be that we would request, we would require consent from parents early on in the process and then keep them informed as we move forward. So I did want to make sure that we did have that legislative mental health code in there so that you can review it, but I did also want to clarify that that states that we may service students without consent, not that we must. Going back to that also, and this was a point that I wanted to address, and I did address previously last August, is that Honor Community Health Clinic does not and is not allowed to provide contraceptives or birth control as a health service in that clinic. So I wanted to be very clear with that, as I was last August. That hasn't changed. Why do we, why do we see a need for a school-based health clinic at the high school? Some of the things that we're looking at as far as some of the benefits medically would be for some of our fragile students that are in the district, students with medical needs such as asthma, some of those chronic needs around diabetes, seizures. Honor Health Clinic staff can provide the training, not only for our staff to support those medical action plans, to support those students, but also in educating not only those students but the parents and responding when we have issues in our buildings. I referenced on here that we have had first responders at our buildings 32 times this school year for minor medical issues. The hope would be that with the support of a school-based health clinic, we could alleviate some of that. Anytime we have a first responder in a building, an emergency vehicle outside of our building, it creates anxiety. It can be activating for our community outside in our neighborhoods as well as for our kids and staff in those buildings. So the hope would be that we'd be able to address some of that from a medical perspective, addressing some of those minor medical issues. From a mental health perspective, I was really looking at, wanted to present to you guys some of our spring survey data from 2022. Parents and guardians expressed that when accessing supports, the top barriers that they experienced included of not being certain of what they needed around mental health, education, where they could benefit from that, from workshops or trainings. The financial costs, 29% of our families said the financial burden was a barrier to accessing services. And wait lists, 25% of our families said they experienced wait lists. In my community-based partnership committee meeting yesterday that we hold as a district on a monthly basis, Easter Seals reported as one of our community partners that they are currently the only mental health provider in Oakland County accepting referrals right now. All of our other mental health providers are currently at capacity, is what Easter Seals had reported at our meeting. So there's a great need out there for our families. That barrier continues to be an issue. It was in 2022, and it's probably grown in 2023. Some of the other things, as we look at some of our needs in our buildings, as we complete threat assessments and suicide assessments in our building, I referenced some of that data. At least 41 of our students involved in suicide assessments resulted in referrals for community mental health evaluations due to suspected medium or high risks. And so with us trying to connect our families, when we identify a student who's at either medium or high risk to a resource in the community, a third-party screener perhaps or an evaluation, oftentimes we leave that with our families. And so we'll conduct that assessment, and then we give our family the resources to pursue with that child. If they run into a provider that says, sorry, we aren't accepting anybody, or they call, say, a mobile crisis response team and they say, we aren't staffed today, that family who's in the midst of crisis really has limited resources at that point. My hope would be with a school-based health clinic, we'll have a health navigator who's right there in our building, who will be networking in our community. So when we complete one of these assessments, we can walk that family right over to the clinic. They'll sit down with that community health navigator, and they can make that phone call with the parent. So if they run into a barrier or roadblock, they'll have the next resource available. And I think that would be a huge asset to our families that are in the midst of crisis with their child. I will say that I did reference some of our co-located treatment services through Easter Seals at both OHS and OMS. We've got one full-time clinician currently. He has been at capacity, I think, since about December. So he currently serves about 61 students, 44 at OHS, 17 at Oxford Middle School. And with that, we've really tried to utilize his services as efficiently as possible. We've grouped students where we could and put them in groups where we could service more students to open up individual services for those that required individual outpatient services. But he is at capacity. He's actually received 116 referrals this year. That's the most we've utilized our co-located services since we've had our partnership with Easter Seals. So we are really making use of the services that we currently have in our district right now. What to expect? We're looking to provide a certain level of medical services, and that would include dental sealants, vision referrals, mental health services and referrals. We want direct care for our high school students, and I want to emphasize for our high school students, so we will not be providing any type of services for community members, anything like that. It will strictly be servicing our high school students that are at Oxford High School. Where we will gain benefit for our community is community-based education and outreach. So Honor Health is going to be able to, as a partnership, be able to do some of that trainings that those surveys back in 2022 referenced. Parents would like more information around what are some mental health concerns? How do we address depression, anxiety, stressors to our children? How do we, how do we support our kids in these areas? So that community-based education is important. And then I just referenced coordination of student care. That's not only in the clinic, but we did have a concern or constraint back in August when we were discussing this with the board about competing with community-based entrepreneurs, providers. And really, we are providing referrals to community providers. So that would include pediatricians, dentists, optometrists, and mental health professionals in our community. And I will speak more to that in a little bit as we move forward. So previous concerns addressed, location at the high school. I just want to be very transparent. There were concerns about having the clinic near or in the 200 hallway. The objective is that is not even on the table now. We really looked at having the clinic centrally located. Some of the considerations that we are looking at is making sure that kids have confidentiality when they go to the clinic, so they aren't stigmatized by their peers. We want to protect their dignity, and we also want to have a minimal impact with any disruption to other students or to our instructional staff at the high school. So those are considerations we're taking into account with the location of the clinic at the high school. Community services and access, there will be no community services provided or community access to the clinic. That is something that I really wanted to be clear about. That was a previous concern. Parent consent, parent consent is going to be required for all medical and dental services provided at the clinic. I want to make sure that that's clear. Students won't. As we develop our policies and procedures, we will clarify that. I went back to the mental health code and reviewed the wording of that with you, so we have full latitude in order to collect consent forms from parents. Preference would be at the beginning of the year when they're doing their arrival packets, just like we do with some other forms. And those consent forms are actually good for four years. In discussions with Honor Health about consent, if a student doesn't have consent and they come down and they've just got a splitting migraine or something like that, and we don't have a consent on file, Honor Health would automatically contact that parent and say, we have your child here, they came to the clinic, they're experiencing this, do you give your verbal consent for us to treat them? And they would be able to do that at that time, so they confirm that. Dan, do you have a question?
Yes. What if the student's 18?
Pardon me?
What if the student is 18?
They would no longer be a minor, so they would be an adult.
Correct. Even if they sign the waiver as, when they're 16 years old and it's good for four years, it ends at their 18th birthday, correct?
They would have, we would have consent, and they would be considered an adult, yeah.
I just, I'm more concerned about a parent wanting to know if we provided any medical care to somebody that's 18 years of age, you know? They would want to know that, and so that's something that we need to consider.
And I think Honor Health is here tonight, so they're going to do a brief, just a question and answer, and they're going to give a slight overview of what we didn't cover in these slides. However, what I'd like to stress is that I was very impressed with their response regarding consent, is that their priority is having parents involved. And if they're making referrals and creating connections in our community, they need that parent involvement in order to make those networking connections for our families. Pregnancy care, education, and family planning, there will be no reproductive services provided at the clinic. That was a concern previously, specifically related to abortion and contraception. Those are the two areas that we were discussing previously. No vaccinations will be provided at the clinic without parental consent, including child well-check vaccinations or COVID vaccinations. It was a question that had come up previously. And then competition with community providers. The state actually that is providing this grant through Honor Health, an expectation with funding is that the clinic creates pathways to service in our community, and so they make that connection with community providers. So these are a list of staff that Honor Health would be hiring in order to staff the clinic. That community health worker is that health navigator role that would be making connections for our families that are really trying to navigate those more intensive services for their children in our community when needed. Nurse practitioner would be one that could really provide services with supporting that our medical action plans for students that have some of those conditions, acute health conditions in our buildings. And this is really a list of some of the integrated medical and mental health care processes that would be included in a school-based health model. Again, I would go back and say, if you look at the bottom, that is referencing some of the barriers that some of our families reported in the spring survey of 2022. And here, we've got opportunities for community and stakeholder communication involvement. So I really want to stress the fact that after the board presentation, board action, we'll be looking at a community advisory council to work through the processes and procedures to get community input. That will include parents, teachers, community, and Honor Community Health staff. They use a youth advisory council, which includes students, a health education forum. So they'll conduct forums with our families to gather information from our family stakeholders, and then they'll do some family education nights and workshops. That isn't something that they're just doing here. That's part of their school-based health model. That's how they launch school-based health clinics across the state where they have clinics So with that, I'm going to bring up our Honor Health representatives. Jeff Cook is the Chief of Community Services, and Rosa Thomas, who actually started this work back in October of 2021 with Oxford Community Schools, is a chief operating officer, so.
Todd? While they're walking up, and maybe you can answer what they're one of the ones that can answer better. So the previous concerns addressed, are those, is that part of the policy that we're coming to an agreement with, with the clinic? How, I mean, it's written down here, right? But how are those really addressed? I'm trying, I mean, it might be different per, but for instance, I mean, you said that it's a culture for parental consent, is that all, it's going to, it's, there's a "may" right in there, but we're going to focus on the parental consent. How is that agreement? What is that agreement?
We actually will, we have a base interagency agreement that lays out all of those details. And so we've had the draft that we had back last August that was kind of mocked up, and attorneys had looked at it on both sides, and they've actually, we're including a number of these other topics in a current one. So as we move forward, that interagency agreement will dictate a lot of this, and they might be able to reference either Jeff or Rosa, how other clinics have done that as far as capturing that. I believe there were some questions about that, and I might have spoken to that in a response to some of those board questions that came out previously as well, Mike. But, yeah.
Jeff? Hi. Thank you, board members, for having us. Again, my name is Jeff Cook, so I am the Chief of Community Services. I've been with Honor for six weeks, and prior to that, I ran 16 school-based health centers through Beaumont. So currently, through Honor, we have 11 school-based health centers, and if this will get approved, it'll be number 12. So, and then also, I have Rosa Thomas with me. She's our chief operating officer, and she's a psychologist by trade, a lot of great mental health experience. She was actually here during the tragedy, providing support to students and family members. So again, thank you so much for having us. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to any of the services associated with the clinic. The interagency agreement that Todd referenced, it is a very involved agreement that outlines every single service that we can offer and will provide. It will list the responsibilities of the district in terms of space, services that you guys will provide, and then what we'll provide, and then there'll be some joint responsibilities in terms of servicing the students and the families. And that will be, I will have a revised copy to Todd probably tomorrow. So that will be presented to you either through Todd or I can present it to, and that will be approved by the board before even moving forward. That agreement is very important, that everybody's aware of what, you know, what we can and can't do, so. Any questions on, from my end?
Amanda?
So for that interagency agreement, is that for the lifetime of the clinic, or can that be changed on a yearly basis? And who would be involved in that? Would it be a collaboration that Honor, OCS, would the board be involved? Would the community be involved?
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Great question. So that is, that agreement can be changed at any point. And it has to be, it has to be approved by our CEO of Honor, and it has to be approved by the board. So we do require, the state of Michigan, our MDHHS requires that Honor CEO sign it as well as the superintendent, and as well as, we have to get board approval. So the state provides an option for us to, for the board chairperson or the board president to sign on behalf of the school board, and we have to show proof of meeting minutes that the school board approved it. The agreement length really is up to, up to you guys. We can, we have the option to have a start date. We have an option for it to be automatically renewed every year. We have an option for you guys to, you know, review it and renew it every other year. The terms are really based on what you guys prefer. Also, for it to be changed, it can be changed, it can be reviewed at any time. It also can be discontinued at any time by either party. So let's say you approve it, and after two years, just not working out, all you have to do is give a 30-day notice, no reason at all, and then, you know, that will be discontinued. So there is an out on either party. So let's say it isn't working out for Honor for some reason, you know, either party can cancel that contract with a 30-day notice, so.
Heather?
So I don't know if this is, so give me some examples, even if you're there from your Beaumont experience, because I know you've only been with Honor for a couple of weeks. Like, I would need to kind of see how this is really going to roll out. Like, give me an example of somewhere around here where you, where you guys did a Beaumont clinic in a district similar to ours, with our demographics and student count and staff count.
Yeah. Well, currently through Honor, we have clinics inside, we have, so we have three in Pontiac. We have one in Waterford, and then we have a full clinic in Auburn Hills. So that's, that's our five that we have through Honor. And then we have what we call a E3 empowerment zone, and those are where we just employ a full-time mental health therapist, no medical services, it's just mental health. And we have two in, three in Pontiac, we have one in Rochester, one in Rodifer, one in Waterford, actually two, sorry, two in Rochester, and then one in Ferndale.
Where are your Rochester ones? Do you mind me asking?
It's at Rochester High School and Hert Middle School. And that's just mental health only. Through Boma, we had four clinics in, I'm going to try to remember all of these. We actually had eight of them. So we have one at So we have one at John Glenn High School in Westland. We have one in Inkster, in a middle school in Inkster. We had two in Taylor, one in River Rouge High School, one in Romulus High School, and then one in Westland Middle School.
Those are full clinics like you guys are talking about wanting to do here?
Exactly the same, yeah.
Is the Auburn Hills site a full clinic?
It is. It's at Avondale High School.
Avondale High School.
Yep. Yeah, it's a very busy clinic, so. Yep, so it's exactly the same, same exact minimum requirement, same exact services, same exact, really, interagency agreement, you know? There's some must haves in that agreement. So it's exactly the same. The only difference is, that would be different here is just servicing the high school students here. The other clinics, they do open it up to community members. And what I found is kids can be so transient in terms of moving around these days. But that would be the only difference between the wellness clinic here.
I'd probably want to have to go see one of those. I think I can deal with you doing.
Yeah, yeah, you're welcome. I'd be happy to give you guys a tour.
Okay.
For sure. And then meet the staff too, so.
Our staff be in service at this clinic too? Should they have the option?
Our staff?
Pardon me?
Our staff, I think it was your question. Is our staff able to be serviced at the clinic?
No, so it is limited to ages five to 21 and up to age 26 for special ed. So that's for direct service inside the clinic. In terms of education, outreach, training, awareness, we do provide education trainings. For example, mental health prevention to teachers, staff, parents, if they would like it. So those health education sessions can be provided and will be provided and offered to every single staff member if they would, you know, like to receive it. But in terms of direct service, like immunization, it's just ages five to 21 and then up to 26 for special ed students, so.
What about our, what about our school population that is of the high school age? I'm thinking along the lines of our older students. Could they come into the high school and get services?
If they're, if they're 21 and under and if they're not a student of.
They would be a student. They're all, they're all students of Oxford.
Sure, yeah, they could come.
Just, I'm just thinking the students that are not in the building, they would have to come through the office just like they were visiting that campus.
That would be your option.
Okay.
And really, so this grant is really flexible, you know? It's up to the school board, it's up to the principal for you guys to decide who comes to the clinic. We have, you know, all of our clinics, like for example, in my clinic through Beaumont, all except one serviced, as long as you lived in Wayne County, you could utilize the clinic. Some will just say those who live in the district, those who attend school in the district. We have some schools where, some districts where, you know, it doesn't matter where you go to school in the district, you can utilize services at the clinic. So whether you go to an elementary school, middle school, high school, you could utilize that clinic. So it's totally up to you guys.
Okay, I have another question. What about if we're going to be referring out to different providers?
Yeah.
What is the vetting process that that provider needs to, to go through in order to become somebody that we're going to refer our students out to?
It's wide open, so it's basically up to the family. They can choose their provider. So it's up to the student, up to the parent. If we, through a physical exam, maybe there's some indication of maybe hurt issues, then we work with the family to determine where they want to be referred to, so a cardiologist. It's, you know, we like to stay local, you know, out of convenience and, you know, really out of the convenience for the family. But it's really up to the family to kind of pick where that referral. So we work closely with that student, that family to refer out.
Because insurances are all, kind of all over the board. Well, you need a referral for this, you need a referral for that.
Right.
You don't, you do, so it's very confusing.
Yeah.
And especially when you're in a situation where you have a medical need, it just becomes your focus is on your student and your child. But I think the other thing that I want, more reason, the more pointed part of my question is, is I know this isn't a Beaumont facility, but I'm going to use the phrase, I don't want anybody just to be referred to a quote unquote Beaumont doctor or a doctor that's in their network. I think, I'm glad that it's open.
It's wide open.
Okay.
Actually, whatever, you know, whatever insurance, so we have community health workers that we work with. They specialize in follow-up, they specialize in referrals, they specialize in a lot of stuff. So our staff will work closely, whatever insurance, let's say, you know, let's say a provider doesn't accept maybe a Medicaid plan, then we'll find one that does. So we'll work closely with the family, with the network of providers to, you know, to be available to that family. We are also, you know, very aware of if they, if they don't have an opportunity, if we, you know, if there are a set of providers that, you know, aren't accepting patients, then obviously we're not going to refer that person. So we'll, you know, we'll make sure our staff, they're knowledgeable in terms of the best providers to recommend. But ultimately, is it up, it is up to the family member. And we can assist them in determining, we can look up their insurance if they have insurance. If they don't have insurance, then we can even assist them in signing up and applying for a Medicaid health plan. So we have navigators that specialize in the Medicaid health plans. They go through trainings and if they don't, if they don't qualify for a Medicaid health plan because let's say they not of age or they make too much money, then we'll still provide that service. None of the patients and the family members will ever get a bill. So let's say they come to the wellness center and they receive services and they can't afford a co-pay or even if they don't want to pay the co-pay, we waive it and we still provide the service and that's per our grant requirements. Also, if they have a balance based on a deductible or out-of-pocket cost, we will waive that, you know, and that is part of our grant requirements too because the state, our child and adolescent health division, they say that absolutely no barriers to care will be in play at the clinic. So we follow that.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Amanda?
I have a couple more, actually. So going back to the consent, you had spoken about having a consent form that was good for four years. Is that going to be sort of a blanket consent? So if they, if a student were to come in for, you know, a headache, they wouldn't have to call the parent to have Tylenol, but then if the next week, if it was maybe to talk about mental health or something different, is that initial consent good for whatever the child walks into for the next four years?
Yes, so the providers, both mental health and medical, they will use their own professional judgment. If it's, if it's a bruise, if it's a headache, you know, if they come in with ongoing headaches, they're going to call the parent, you know? If they come in with ongoing issues with anxiety and it progresses to, you know, maybe some thoughts of harming themselves or obviously that's very serious and we would, you know, activate our emergency protocol. But it would just depend on the seriousness of the issue if there's a pattern. If the student keeps on coming in with a stomach ache, you know, obviously there could be some tests that the provider recommends, you know, there could be ongoing mental health issues, so. So that consent, you know, we always err on the side of safety. The only reason we have that policy in place for it's good for four years is because it allows us, you know, like I said, if we don't have consent, you know, we don't treat. So we can't perform that physical, we can't provide that Tylenol unless we have consent.
Can I piggyback off that?
Yeah.
Real quick, so do you have an electronic medical record that has a patient portal that parents could access and see visit summaries like we all do when we go to primary care doctors?
Yeah, very good question. So we do have a, it's called Next Gen. Any sensitive material like mental health, the parents will not have access.
I'm talking medical only right now.
You know, medical, yeah. If it's a sensitive issue, kind of like a confidential issue, then the parent will not have access. So that will be flagged, so. And students, actually minors do have a right not to consent to release their medical records, you know? And we have a full policy on that. That's one of our policies that our advisory board members that we set up will have to review and approve. So any sensitive related issue, any abuse, let's say there, you know, maybe a student comes to the clinic and, you know, complains of abuse by a parent, you know, the fact that we get child protective services involved and any of that information will not be released to the parent. The parent will not have access to that portal. The parent will not have access to that information, so.
If the, if the parent signs the release for four days, the consent, four years, the consent, do they have an ability to come back in another year and withdraw it?
They do. That's a good question, yes. So any parent has the ability to revoke a consent. The only thing they would have to do is sign the consent that they discontinue or revoke it, date it, and we'll put that on file. And so we will not have the ability to see that student unless it's an emergency. So if it's, if it's life-threatening, you know, even inside the school, let's say a student, we don't have consent on a student and they're a minor or even if they're, you know, 18 or over and if their life is being threatened, let's say they fall, crack their head open, let's say they're having an asthma attack and they can't breathe, then we will provide that service to save their life, you know, and we don't need consent. Consent goes out the window when it's life-threatening. But yeah, they do have the ability to revoke that consent at any time for any reason, you know? And unless it's life-threatening, we will not see that student, so.
Okay, Amanda, you had multiple questions, so.
Yeah.
It's okay.
I won't get into all of them tonight, but just a couple quick more. I want to reiterate, so the clinic will be covered by immunity, correct? So any malpractice or medical error claim will be covered under governmental immunity?
Yes.
Okay.
Hundred percent. Any services from that clinic are hundred percent covered and, you know, no liability for the district.
Zero liability, okay, great. And then as far as, I did ask this question and got somewhat of a response, so maybe you could send us a little bit more information on the procedures in place that you have to identify and prevent medical errors?
Yes.
So that we can kind of take a closer look at what policies and procedures you have in place.
Yeah, we have a full quality assurance policy. We have a quality assurance committee that meets monthly. We have two physicians that lead that and we go over any incident reports, which includes any medical reports that come in through any of our school-based sites. We have incident reporting that we go through each incident report by policy. We're required to create an action plan. So let's say, you know, let's say we have a slip and fall in one of our clinics and there was a puddle of water. You know, we have to go through this comprehensive risk assessment with our risk manager to avoid those problems in the future. This committee is made up of nurses, physicians, Rosa from the mental health side, myself, we have our risk and compliance director. So there's probably about 15 people that serve on this committee. And then on top of that, we're required to have a quality assurance subcommittee at each clinic. So if we were to get one here at Oxford, we would have an interdisciplinary quality committee made up of our physician assistant or our nurse practitioner, our master level therapist, our community health worker, our medical assistant. I would be the lead in this committee. And then we talk about policies, we talk about all of our chart reviews, we do quarterly chart reviews on each provider. We pick a special project that we're required to focus on to improve every year. We would present that to our community advisory committees as well as our youth advisory committees. It's a plan do steady act where we identify maybe something that we need to improve upon. Could be patient satisfaction scores. It could be our quality outcomes linked to our work plan with our grant. And then we meet on a quarterly basis to review that. Actually, we meet on a monthly basis because we involve our, that and our staff meetings every month, so. But I can provide that policy for you guys to review if you want.
Yes, thanks, thank you.
So, Amanda?
I'll stop.
I do, sorry. Just a couple clarifying points. So I wasn't on the board when you guys first presented, so I'm trying to get caught up just so you guys know. The timeline that, say we vote on it at the next meeting, it gets approved, what's the timeline to the community advisory committees, the other committees, and then the actual launch? Would that be, just so I'm clear, next academic year?
Yeah, good question. So if you were to approve this at the end of the month, we would get a, our first and first thing we would do is form a community advisory committee. It consists of parents, school staff, it could involve, it will involve students, anybody who really takes ownership and takes an interest in adolescent health. So one-third, so 33% of the committee has to be made up of parents of youth age. So parents that have children ages five to 21. And then it'll include, it can include some hospital or some healthcare staff. So anybody who really shows a passion for adolescent health, that would be the first thing we do because we would really formulate a plan to develop announcements, you know? We want to make sure that we get input not only from the community advisory committee, but, you know, those stakeholders in the school, you know? Not everybody in the school in the district will be able to be on the committee, so we want to make sure we get input. And then implementation, you know, we would work closely with the superintendent and Todd in terms of developing some bids for construction renovation. We would work with your architectural company to determine a timeline and those timelines may vary. Usually a full build-out, you know, most likely, especially with the, coming out of a pandemic, it could take, you know, could take up to five, six months. So what we would do is we would coordinate ordering all of our medical supplies and all of our medical equipment, exam tables, furniture, desks, all that will be covered by the grant, you know? So we will order those and then in terms of opening, the state, since this was put on hold once, the state kind of expects us to be up and running, maybe not all full services, but, you know, they give us, they gave us a timeline of January 2024. They would like to see most services, you know, provided, so. And of course, that is flexible. It's based on supplies, you know? We know that there could be some supplies and, or some delays in getting supplies, some building supplies and stuff like that, so.
Any further questions?
If I can just add, the critical timeline here is of course the construction because if we can get that done prior to school starting, it's least disruptive to the students. It's not that we couldn't do some of the construction after kids were there, but if we could get the majority of it done, then it's less, so that's why we're saying, you know, if you approve August 25th, we've still got to put out the RFP, we've got to get bids from contractors. There's things we have to do in the hopes that someone could start construction in June. That would be the hope.
Do we have a location? Pardon? Do we have an identified location yet?
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at a couple of classrooms in the center of the building that look like they would accommodate this well. Certainly before you meet on the 25th, we would be able to have that location selected. meet on the twenty-fifth, we would be able to have that location selected, and we would be able to get to you some of the diagrams of what we thought it might, it might look like, a couple of options. Right now, tonight, we don't have that selection, but probably, Todd, I think we were talking about in another week, we might be able to tie that down and, and get the right people involved in the, in the decision.
And so the exclusion of community from the previous conversation to just include high school students negates every other student in every other building that this grant could qualify?
Well, again, that's up to you guys. We have the ability to serve anybody between the ages of five to twenty-one and up to twenty-six for special ed. So if, if, if you guys decide to serve the middle school students and they could come over, our, our hours of operation usually, we start when school starts, you know, so we could start whenever students are in session. And then we do have the ability to extend our hours to meet the needs of your students. Again, that would be up, up to you. We could, we could just limit it to high school students. You could open it up. Again, I think as Todd referenced, you know, our first and foremost would be safety. You know, absolutely no community members will have access. How that plays out with other students in the district and parents bringing them over, you know, could formulate a plan to do that. My, my staff will be flexible, you know. I have sites where we, we provide a late night, you know, to the family members who work late. So some of my sites were open till seven PM. If that's the case, we, we will just have a shorter day, like maybe on a Friday, we would, you know, have to close up the clinic. I can't work my staff more than forty hours, so we would have to kind of balance that. But.
I understand that. I just want to make sure, since I wasn't at the previous table, that the clear understanding is that if we limit it to just high school students at Oxford High School, that precludes bringing in others, and that is a decision that has to be made.
Yeah.
Gotcha. And that, because it's just for students.
Just for, yep, just for students.
Got it. Well, understanding.
And that can, that can be changed. We could, we could change that agreement. It's, it's totally up to the board.
Okay.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I just want to be clear. So this isn't a, a build-out or a build-on to our building. We're going to find room inside our building?
Yes.
I thought we were already kind of maxed out. So how are we going to, how are we going to find room for this?
So Heather, we have, we have. Well, we have located a couple of options. That requires minimal staff move around. You need to give us just a few more days so that we can talk to staff that would be involved to kind of finalize the plan. We can get that information to you through, you know, an update at the end of this week, but we need to give Deja and her staff time to be able to look at and discuss the options that we found. And then once everybody's informed at the high school, then I'll be able to get that information out to all of you. Another couple of days is probably what we need. And I can explain to you how the space is coming about and what, if anything, is getting displaced and, and all of the details. But at this point, it's just, we have a couple of options, and we're still trying to figure out which would be the best. And then we have to talk to the people involved.
Dee, and I can provide you with what we need as a minimum in the clinic. Now, for example, we, we absolutely have to have two exam rooms. And, you know, the exam rooms, you know, can be like nine by twelve feet. So I can give you all the, really the requirements, you know, in terms of needing, you know, we really recommend having three exam rooms because I do anticipate a lot of need, you know, for students. We have to have a, a mental health therapist office to provide therapy. We have to have a kind of a lab area, waiting room, reception, a bathroom, kind of a, a meeting room for our community, or our youth advisory council and our community advisory council to meet. So I can give you some of those bare minimums that will, you know, should be able to fit in the space.
What, and what is, what is our own, I, I know that we've done a lot of hiring for mental health staff. What, what is our contact for the high school? I, I would want to know that. Like, how many FSLs do we have? How many counselors do we have? How many restorative practices coordinators do we have? How many, you know, how many of our own staff, we, you know, we want to give them job security too. That's their job. That's what we hired them to do.
That's the mental health people.
Right.
Yeah. Because we have no medical, but you're talking about.
Right. I'm talking about mental health, because that's what they keep talking about. But we just hired a whole bunch of people that are Oxford community employees.
The, the difference would be is the level of care, Heather. So this is actually a clinic based, and so they're providing treatment services similar to what you would receive in a community-based clinic. So our mental health staff provides school-based interventions as part of a multi-tiered framework. And so they'll provide four to six-week interventions based on data and kind of measure students' response. But when students don't respond to that tier-two, that short-term intervention, or even a tier-three, one-on-one intervention, that's where you run into that next level of care, which is treatment. And so being able to make those referrals, as I referenced early in the presentation, across Oakland County, as was reported through Eastern Seals yesterday, they are the only mental health provider currently accepting referrals. Everyone else is, is at their capacity. So it's that next level of care, which typically in a school, public school-based model, we don't provide treatment in a school. We provide interventions as part of a tiered framework. So Jeff might be able to expand further on what they do provide around that.
So we have to, we have to provide the state an assurance that nothing will be supplanted. So there's no way, shape, or, and the state will check this. That, you know, we have to, we have to guarantee that no current school service will be eliminated. So, you know, they want, the state want to make sure that we add to services, not supplant any services. So it's not like any, any therapist, any counselor, any social worker that you have hired right now, they, they cannot be laid off because we're coming in. And, and so that's a guarantee that we have to provide the state. Kind of like Todd said, we're doing evidence-based cognitive behavioral therapy, solution-based therapy. It's, it is a clinical program that we're providing. So it's just like, you know, anybody that will walk into a, a mental health agency and ask for assessment and therapy, that's what we're going to be doing, which is much different than social working. Maybe Rosa can expound on that.
I'm going to have to move this to my side, I guess. Thank you very much for having us today. As, you know, in the continuum of care, if you look at it, at the system of care, not every child that come into our service is going to need the same service. Like your school, look at your school psychologist. They may be doing testing to look at cognitive impairment, learning disabilities, and so on. In the clinics that we're having, we're having the children that come in, just to tell you, they come in and they said, "I'm really having a stomachache." The next day I come back, "I have an stomachache." The next day I come back, and I said, "Well, you know, it's something else going on." And our clinician is going to say, "Okay, let's get the mental health person here." And then we discover that this child is having some issues, and his anxiety mixed with something else. So that kind of thing, we could look into the clinic, maybe three, four sessions. We could talk to the child, do some breathing exercises. But then if the child said, "I have been abused, and I have all this trauma, and I have brothers and sisters that need more," we're going to go to the next level of care. We're going to have to say, "Okay, we need home-based services." And I happen that I was a home-based therapist for a while. So I went to the homes. That required two to three hours a week to work with the whole family, to bring them in. So those are the things that we are looking at. We are looking at how we refer the individual, how we work with the family. Are these individuals need a little bit more? Do they need Spanish speaking? We have a big population. Sometimes it's Spanish speaking. We had a contract with the Central Familia that we could provide that, because translating in therapy, let me tell you, doesn't work, right? Because my native language is that too. And I, I hear the translations, and the translations are like, "No, that is not what this person is saying. That's not her history. It's not what we want." So our clinic is looking, if you look at it, look it up like a center that you come with a airplane, and we're saying, "This is where the destination is." Sometimes the destination is where we are, and we could provide those services. But we are not the higher service either. So if a child come in and is suicidal and homicidal, we're going to be triggering a phone call to the parent, to common ground, to get the assessment, make sure that that person get that service, get there. Because how many of us know how to get where we need to go? Right? So our, our job is to get that community health worker to make sure that tells that parent, "This is what you could do." When you have a problem as a parent and your child is in crisis, you're not thinking, "What I need to do?" You need that extra help with that community health worker saying, "Let me make the phone calls for you. Let me make the appointment. Let me guide you. Your insurance doesn't cover this, but we could get this." And also, and we have a full center in Paniac High School. We have children that are homeless, that people didn't know that they are going couch to couch. And then the center could identify them. But those children only have that ability because the school have the center and they have access. So we're an access point to really put a child where they need to. And really, for me, and I was honored to come and help during the time of need, and we were standing up there, and people would come and talk to us, right? Because we need, they knew we were therapists, we were mental health workers. We were up hearing ear. Not everybody are the need the higher level. But if we don't catch them when they are at that lower level, it's going to become worse. So that is what the center does. And we have one in Paniac, like I said. We have, in that population, we have a lot of people that have other needs, and mainly our housing. And we were able to get housing for the families and then with the child. But the child was that came and told us, "My family is homeless." And so that's another piece that we see. So this is not a center for everything. We don't do everything. We do the referrals. Look at us like this, you know, air traffic control, right? That we're moving people from one place to another. So you have any other questions about mental health? I would like to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I think we've got quite a bit of information. I think we've had a lot of questions that were brought to the table. I'm glad to see that we took a look at where we were at before, made some adjustments. Those adjustments are, I think, our community was, you know, I think some of the board members too were a little concerned, myself included, about people coming in from the outside, especially right now. So I'm, I'm glad that we, that it was heard and it was taken into consideration. Yes, ma'am.
When we were working, the grant was given a year ago. So what we heard from the community is that we weren't ready to spend this fund. The fund, I talked to the state of Michigan. The state of Michigan said, "We will do whatever the community wants to do." And so they put a hole in this grant. So I want you to know that we will work with whatever you need to do. And the state was more than happy to make all the arrangements, all the, the changes that you need to be, so that the community feels safe. So that was, and when I talked to them last, and before my colleagues took over that piece, it was still the same thing, that they're going to do what they need to do. So I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the grant has been very accommodating through Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and very flexible with us, from the utilization of funds to actually what our community feels that they need or can't, can't have at this time. So I, you know, I'm very, have gratitude towards them for that. And I look forward to, you know, being able to answer your guys' questions and move it forward. Is there, next week, a visit to Avondale? Do we know who would like to go, or do you guys want to reach out to me with dates and times?
I think that whoever wants to go needs to get with, with Todd.
Myself and Vicky perhaps?
Yep.
What kind of coordinate?
We have to do groups of three, right?
Yeah.
You can be together as long as you're not like deliberating.
Correct.
We can go to a function together.
We won't be deliberating.
And Todd will tell that I'm out of town next week.
Yeah. So if you reach out to me, I will coordinate a couple of different times with Avondale and try to get us over there so that we can get a look at the clinic.
Let's try to get to Todd by the end of this week, if you can make it, because we're compressing that time, not just for us but for them as well.
Thank you.
I did have a comment.
Yes.
And I just wanted to share, I, I think that, I think that this clinic can offer a lot of services that maybe a lot of us just don't see because we're not in that space. We were talking about people who don't use English as their first language. And, and there's a lot of people in our community who Spanish is a first language for, but we don't necessarily see them as much because they don't necessarily know how to access some of these things. We have people in our community, we have children who are unhoused in this community. You know, we have people without insurance. We have people who are working hourly jobs and can't take time off work to get their kids to the doctor. We have families on Medicaid who have no idea how to even start the phone calling process when it comes to getting services for their kids. And I just think that, I just think we need to think long and hard about this, because if we are, if we want to provide services to every student, we have to think about the ones that we are not seeing. That's all.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Very good. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Rosa. Item D, Guidepost Presentation.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. One second. So for those of you I've not met yet, good evening. My name is Bradley Disick. I'm an executive vice president at the consulting firm, Guidepost Solutions. I am pleased to report that our investigation is close to completion, and that we are transitioning for the most part to report writing. We still have about two or three interviews that we're going to finish up this month, one for a critical witness who is represented by counsel, and we're going to do some final testing on some of the security controls over the next week or two. We have reached out to all of the plaintiff's attorneys to give everyone who is a victim or the family of a victim the last opportunity to meet with us. We have had over sixty percent of the victims and the victims' families sit down with us, and those who have not yet, we wanted to make sure that they had that final opportunity. As an initial matter, we expect that our first report will be released publicly in the next few weeks. This report will be released to you, the board, at the same time as it is released to the public. Our first report will document the district's current security and threat assessment program and practices. We have reviewed all policies, procedures, and practices. We have sat in on trainings. We have spoken with people on the threat assessment teams, people who are involved with your security on a daily basis. And a review will be comprehensive, and the report will be as well. It will document a lot of good practices, others that may be excessive and unneeded going forward, and places where improvement can be made. After this first report is released, and at the request of this board for community listening sessions, we will host a community forum to answer questions about our first report for the Oxford community and the public. The date and, and format for this community forum is to be determined, but will most likely be in May. Back in November twenty-two, twenty-two, we announced that our first report would be released in January twenty-twenty-three. However, shortly after that announcement, superintendent, former superintendent Weaver announced his resignation. Additionally, we learned shortly after that, as a final act before announcing his resignation, Mr. Weaver hired a new director of operations who is now responsible. Mr. Weaver hired a new director of operations who is now responsible for the district's security and threat assessments. Various new security policies, emergency operating plans, and related technology have been implemented, thereby significantly changing the district's security posture. This new director of operations, with the support of Dr. Markovich and this board, has also provided us with a level of transparency and access that we did not previously receive. Beginning in the winter, with the election of Dan D. Alessandro as president and the appointment of Dr. Vicki Markovich as superintendent, we experienced more voluntary cooperation from school employees, including those represented by counsel. Because of these considerations, a decision was made to report to the community on what is now and will be in place going forward, rather than document and report on security and threat assessment programs and practices that were interim and no longer applicable. In preparing the second report, which will include the findings of our independent investigation, we have been in frequent contact with the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office. The Prosecutor's Office has provided Guideposts with significant detailed information relating to the incident. That information is critical to the review, and some portions of that information are still non-public. As a condition of receiving that information, Guideposts agreed that it would not divulge any non-public information until such time as the prosecutor was comfortable that disclosure would not impact the Miller hearing, which I believe is in two weeks.
It was July.
June 2nd now?
It just got delayed.
It's July?
So the, so the Miller hearing for the shooter or the criminal trial of the Crumblies. Guideposts will continue regular communication with the Prosecutor's Office to determine when and how we can issue our second report on the incident without impacting the criminal cases. Hopefully, our working relationship with the Prosecutor's Office will serve as a national example for how communities, subject matter experts, law enforcement, and prosecutors can work together and collaborate to find factual truths and identify learnings from tragedies like the one here in Oxford. In addition to the Oakland County Prosecutor, the Oakland County Executive, Oakland County Corporation Counsel, and Oakland County Sheriff provided us with complete transparency, producing all evidence and making available to us every person we asked to interview, which includes individuals who are now retired and had no requirement to sit down and meet with us. As alluded to above, beginning in the winter, we experienced more voluntary cooperation from school administration, school administrators, and employees, including those represented by counsel. Although voluntary cooperation remains imperfect, with the support of Dr. Markovich and the advocacy of President D. Alessandro, voluntary cooperation has been substantial. However, several current and former school employees who are critical witnesses have declined to participate, most on the advice of counsel. Putting aside the significant difficulties we have encountered with cooperation, and although imperfect, we do have prior statements for some of them, including court transcripts and statements made to law enforcement the day of the incident. Witness accounts, extensive factual discovery, including access to communications, to help us provide the community and public with a comprehensive factual report of what happened before, on, and after November 30th, 2021. To sum up, our first report will be released in the coming weeks. And our second report will be released after consultation with the Prosecutor's Office to determine when and how we can issue the report without impacting the criminal cases. Both reports will be comprehensive and include recommendations. Both reports will be released to the board at the same time they are released to the public. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Brad.
Just a question. So at the beginning you had talked about the community forums possibly starting in May. Can, can you clarify, just for the, you know, there's a difference in population. Some folks can come during the day, some at night, some only on weekends. Will there be multiple community forums? Because I think you may need to do just, at least two. If, just one would, I think, be insufficient.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you, Erin. Any other questions? Brad, Guidepost, thank you very much for the update. I know that we all, as a board, this community has had a lot of questions. But it's important that we get quality and not expedience. And that's not gonna sit well with a lot of folks. But we want, we want quality. We want as, as many answers as we can possibly get. We owe it to this community. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I think just, I was just looking up the date. I believe the Miller hearing is now July, just for your awareness.
So just to clarify, that does not mean a report will not be released before that. There may be certain non-public information that, for example, may be redacted. That's to be determined. I'm not stating that's the way, the approach or the method that we will take. But we're still working with the Prosecutor's Office on how that information can and will be shared with the community. But that does not mean that second report will not come out until after the Miller hearing or the Crumblies trial concludes.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Yes, Amanda.
So in your original proposal, under task number three, community engagement, you had stated that you will hold community listening sessions to understand security concerns and priorities of the community. This includes town halls, focus groups, and other, excuse me, relevant stakeholders who would like a voice in the process. Can you please tell us how many of these events you have scheduled in the past? And when? And when will they be scheduled in the future?
We have made, we have met, as I stated, with a number of members of the community. We've also met with victims and victims' family. We have not had a large town hall, community forum. I believe a decision was made last June or July by the district and the district's council not to do that for various reasons that I do not recall. But we, that was not moved forward with in terms of the town hall. But we have provided general access to anyone who wanted to come meet with us and speak with us, share their perspective, share their viewpoint. And we have met with a significant number of people from the community, as well as victims and victims' families.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm assuming you can probably speak too. Will there be another update? For example, if you talk to the prosecutor and you are able to give us a little bit more information as far as a timeline, do you expect to come back and, and update us accordingly?
Whenever, whenever we're requested to provide an update or there is a material information to share as an update, we're happy to do so. You know, as I stated, we'll probably be back in May, which is just, you know, three, four weeks away, to host those community events, to discuss the first report. So if there's material information to share at that point, in addition to what we're sharing this evening, we're happy to provide an additional update.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, from what I understood, if, what I can recall, was there was the opportunity for anybody that wanted to partake in sitting down with Guidepost to go on a website and, and make that connection.
Correct.
So there, it may not have been a community forum, but there were avenues in order for that to happen.
Right. I, I think the decision was made, instead of having, you know, a large town hall, excuse me, a large town hall event with security concerns, that we would focus more on one-on-one interactions and small focus groups. And we did, and we had dozens and dozens of those. So there was no limit in terms of who interacted with us. Our, we're still here if people want to sit down with us, meet with us, share their perspective. You know, part of this process is listening. That's the only way you're gonna get buy-in from the community. It's the only way you're gonna help the community heal. We strongly encourage everyone to reach out to us. And we're happy to sit down with them. We have trauma-informed folks who can sit down with them, meet with them, listen to them, hear their thoughts, their concerns. You know, that's part of the process and we're happy to do it.
Any other questions?
Coming weeks means one, two, three, four. I, I saw you before. I joined in October and coming weeks was like four weeks then and it's been 12.
It'll be the next two, three weeks.
Two, three weeks.
The, the draft is completed. It's going through its editing process. Yes.
Very good.
So maybe if that's the case, and you're willing to say that, like you said, so maybe in two or three weeks, if we do not have something, or we all don't have something because we're not getting it before the community. So if, if something's not ready for presentation purposes or reporting purposes, then you need to know to come back. Like this is, this is the invitation.
Yeah.
So if we don't have a report, we're gonna need to see you back because the community thinks that, you know, we're stalling this. Or, I mean, there's a lot of misperceptions out there about our involvement and our stalling. And that's, that's been quite opposite. We've done everything that we can to encourage this. We've been interviewed ourselves, so, but it's time for it to get done. And so the expectations were set with our former president. There was never really a timeline put in place. There should have been. And so now we're really just trying to kind of close in on what was promised.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Very good. Anybody else? Thank you, Brad. Appreciate you coming tonight and look forward to hearing from you in two to three weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yes. I'm gonna give you a couple more minutes. We're gonna move to public comment right now. We're gonna move that up because we have some other agenda items. We want to do that now.
No, you can.
Because everybody's been here, this is probably a little longer than what we had anticipated, other presentations going. So we want to move that up now. It's already 10 o'clock. So we're gonna go into that now. And I'll allow for the next couple of minutes. If you want to turn something in, you can, we're, we're happy to do that. Okay, we're gonna go just like last time, Shirley Tomzak. Okay. No? No? Angie Reed.
I don't know how I'm gonna follow that. My situation is far more personal and more high school local. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know the last portion is usually reserved for comments, but mine is more question-related tonight. I apologize in advance for reading, but I am a far better writer than I am an impromptu speaker. So I wrote it down. Okay. In order to arrive at the questions I have and the reason behind my speaking tonight, I need to give the board some insight into my own personal story. My name is Angie Reed. I'm a 20-plus-year Oxford resident. I have two daughters, 2020 Oxford grads, and a son who's a senior. I've been working as a substitute in the Oxford district for more than five years, which has allowed me the incredible opportunity to meet thousands of these kids, literally. I love them. I am the JV tennis coach and I am also a certified mid-Michigan therapy dog handler. I worked through the pandemic, even taking on a long-term position. But most importantly, and of note, I was right alongside our students on November 30th. After the events that shook our community, I began taking my then-10-week-old puppy, Dolly, to the Legacy Center, which all of you know served as our safe haven for the community. It was during that time that I decided to certify Dolly as a therapy dog. Dolly literally loves everybody. I am proud to report that Dolly was a member of the Fall '22 Mid-Michigan Therapy Dog graduating class. After Dolly's graduation in October, she immediately began coming to school with me every Monday at lunch. When I was hired this year as a full-time building sub, which by the way, again, I love these kids, love my job, every day I am both challenged and entertained thoroughly. I took Mondays off every week with the explicit plan to bring Dolly to school with me at lunch and volunteer. Fast forward to March 13th. After visiting at lunch, my usual Monday, I got a call from Laura Zoni, the high school recovery coordinator, informing me that Dolly and I were no longer welcome. To be honest with you, after I hung up that day, I literally felt sick. I could not imagine having to tell the kids that Dolly would no longer be coming to see him at lunch. There are a lot of kids at that school, I will tell you, regardless of November 30th, that not only thrive but count on that interaction, not only from Dolly, but the other dogs at the school. I was asked to discontinue my weekly visits. I was informed because there are policies and procedures in place, as well as the fact that the OPAC dogs and the mid-Michigan dogs receive different training. Okay. I wonder if the board might be able to direct me to where I can find a copy of that policy and procedure that won't allow me to bring Dolly on Mondays at lunch to volunteer. Regarding the difference in training, I would like to point out to the board that in the past six months that we've been coming on Mondays, we have yet to come into contact with any of the Oxford High School dogs, a fact that can be substantiated by Mrs. Zoni herself because she informed me that the OPAC dogs do not come into the cafeteria. Being an employee that spends five days a week at the high school, I am aware that the mid-Michigan therapy dogs have been phased out and replaced by the OPAC dogs. However, I am not just someone wanting to bring my dog to school, as was suggested to me. I am honestly at a, at a loss as to how someone like myself, who works in the building on a daily basis, volunteers their time for an hour and a half on Mondays each week freely, can be asked to stay away. Who are we hurting? This seems ridiculous to me, and it doesn't seem like a reasonable decision for our high school students. Perhaps this board can help me clearing up an unsubstantiated error, in my opinion, and perhaps give Dolly an honorary title of OPAC dog. That's all I got. Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, question?
She'll, Dr. Markovich will reach back out too.
I'll reach out to you. Thank you.
Emily Bush.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak in front of the board this evening. I'm just, I gathered a few questions during the Honor Community Health Clinic that I just wanted to ask. I know that they won't necessarily be addressed, but on the record, maybe they can be addressed. Just a few. Do we have a school nurse anywhere in the district? And I know that it was mentioned a few times. What percent of our district's students are on free and reduced lunch? I don't know if that's something that we can address, or I'm curious about that. And just, I guess, a rhetorical question. Haven't some of the complaints been, we didn't have the appropriate mental health response on November 30th, 2021? And this is a question I, I don't really, I know sort of, but I would like it addressed. Are guidance counselors, FSLs, and restorative practice staff credentialed mental health providers? And the last question I have is, are we confident as a community that when children leave our buildings, they all have access to quality, affordable mental health care? I guess that's the second to the last. And I think we need to ask ourselves, does the district have an obligation, based on what happened here on November 30th, 2021, to partner with a respected, evidence-based entity that can provide these types of services? So those are just the questions that I developed during the presentation. So those are just the questions that I developed during the presentation. So I'm here today in support of the Honor Community Health School-Based Health Clinic or Center. To begin, I'd like to start by stating their mission, which can be found on their website, to provide for the health and wellness needs of the underserved of Oakland County through the provision of comprehensive, integrated primary behavioral health and dental care. We have students and families in our school district and community that take advantage of our free and reduced meals. I don't think it's a stretch to assume that many of these same families and students may not have access to affordable, quality, mental, dental, and mental health care. In a district full of families and kids who have been impacted by our school tragedy, we must take any and every opportunity to facilitate access to such critical services. We are so fortunate to have Honor willing and able to step up. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of this incredible center. Not everyone in our community has afforded the luxury of access to the vital services Honor provides. Thank you.
No, I know. Marcy Benzman? She left?
Yeah.
All right, that's our unscheduled audience participation, so thanks for allowing us to move that around. We had a lot of little marks on here. We're at second reading of policy updates. Item E, second reading. We've kind of gone over all these before, what the changes were, what the nuances were. So if everybody's comfortable and nobody has an objection, we want to just read through them, and then we can either yea or nay them.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Okay.
And we did table the one that there was...
Yes.
So...
That we have a lengthy legal...
Yes, yeah.
That's not included in this, though I double-checked it.
Correct.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and read those numbers, and we'll move forward.
Move to approve the second reading of policies. 5111, 5113.01, 5113.02, 5120, 5200, 6108, 6460, 6700, and 7440.03.
Okay, is there support? Support. Dr. Reese, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, Mr. Barna. Finance and Operations.
Good evening. So we have two items on the agenda under finance.
Yes.
And again, as you can see, the first one is the vehicle for maintenance. And again, that's a van. As you can see, kind of a little bit of the history behind this is that we actually received board approval last school year for a Ford van, and that did not come to fruition because of the supply chain crisis. And during that time, we ended up canceling the order because they wanted to charge us an additional $10,000 over and above what the board had approved at the time. So this is the alternative in what you have in front of you, which is part of my deal. So it is a consortium-priced vehicle, and that is what you are currently reviewing for purchase. It is part of budget, part of the general fund, part of Tony Sartain's maintenance budget, so.
Is this a Ford, or is it a...
It's actually a Dodge, so.
Is that, is this the...
This is the first item. No.
Okay. Was this the, because I was looking at that, and I thought we just, didn't we just get a vehicle? Was this the one that the step, the plow was known to?
So this does not. This is actually a box truck. And part of the issue and why we need this van, we already have one in the district, which is being used by one of our maintenance staff. But currently, one of the other individuals, our maintenance technician, drives a truck. And all the tools that he needs to go around the district do not fit into the truck. And so we're having to have others drive, meet him, give him tools from the big box truck in order to make this all work out. So the truck that is currently being utilized for the tools, some of the tools, will still be kept in fleet. It is a 2016 GMC. And it will be, have a plow put on front of it. We have an extra plow in the maintenance building to be used for such purposes. So it will not be sold.
The one he's driving?
The one he's currently driving. That's right, the 2016 GMC.
Okay. And there's no motion on that?
No, just wanted you to review it. And if you have any questions, obviously, today or in the next two weeks, feel free to reach out to Vicki, and obviously, I will give the answers to your questions regarding this.
All right, very good. And then there's item B, purchase request for the athletic department.
That's right. So this are, these are three mats, wrestling mats. And so this is the purchase, approximately $30,000. $10,000 of those funds is actually from the Boosters. And so I just wanted you to look at that, review that. This is not part of the original budget for athletics, but it's something that's really necessary. And so it'll just be an add to our budget for this year.
Is this going to be at the high school or the middle school?
This is at the high school.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
But the middle school's going to get their old mats?
That's correct, yeah. So we're going to repurpose these mats at the middle school, so.
So one of the things that I asked around about is, our middle school holds the Oakland County wrestling meat for middle school, and it is a big, it's a large mat. So it's not like we could, you know, having those mats over there, taking them from the high school, moving over there. And they're, how old are the ones at the high school? They're probably five, six, seven years old.
At least, yes.
Yep. So we could transition those over to the middle school, and then have new ones. I just wanted to be sure.
Okay. I'm confused. I thought that the notes said they were 20 years old. I'm confused about some of those.
Could very well be.
I believe they said those would be destroyed, that there was a second set. There's a, so there's a really old deteriorated set.
There's ones, there's ones that are...
And then the second set that the high school has will go to middle school. And then the brand-new ones are going to high school. Is that all correct?
High school has two sets of wrestling mats.
Correct.
But they only use one set at a time?
For competition, they have the wrestling room.
Yeah.
That they practice in. I think those are the ones that are 20-plus years old.
Right, because I remember when this one came to the Boosters Club. I was at that Boosters meeting, and that was a while ago. And we had, and there was a lot of discussion about the condition those mats were in. So I'm surprised that it's taken this long to get this far, but...
We're pretty frugal.
Because, what's that?
We're pretty frugal, so.
Yeah.
Pretty try-to-be.
Well, and I don't remember what, and I don't remember what the Boosters, I mean, obviously, the Booster says you have to contribute, because that's what they do. That's what the Booster's Club does, is they will donate money, but they don't just give money. You have to contribute.
We're very grateful for their donation towards these, obviously.
So, so we have, so then that will leave us one set at the high school.
Two sets. Two sets.
So, okay.
So, okay, there's two sets now.
Right. And has to go in the trash.
Like old, 20 years old. And one's like five or six years old.
Right.
So the high school's going to get rid of the old one. The 20-year one's going to go in the garbage can.
Right.
They're going to get a brand-new one with this money.
Right.
And then they're going to give that five- or six-year-old one over to the middle school.
I think, I think.
Am I right?
So that's where I'm still lost.
If it's critical for the decision, you can hold the decision, and I'll get you the answer. If it's not critical for the decision, you can let us find the mats, and I will still get you the answer.
Right.
Because I don't, I, at this point, I'm confused. And I thought I knew.
Well, maybe I missed that one. That's how I understood it.
But I am too confused. I don't know, Mary.
We could clarify these questions for you.
I don't know.
I mean, I, whether we have two sets or three sets, and one's great, and one's, I mean, you're right, we are somewhat frugal when it comes to spending general funds. The Booster Club does contribute a significant amount of money.
They sure do.
And this one thing I do know about the Booster Club is, there are so many people asking for money. They just don't give it to you just on a whim. And I feel somewhat comfortable saying that they've vetted a lot of this out.
Oh, and I know, and I know that they're needed. I just would, is there a reason we are doing it right now?
Well, they would like to, they would like to get them in sooner rather than later because of something to do with the season. But to be, to be honest with you, I thought it was just kind of this automatic thing that wouldn't require a lot of questions, and I may be wrong on there. And if necessary, we can move it to the 25th, and I can get you the answers you need.
I don't, I mean, I don't think I have to have the answers to move it. I just don't like having, I, I would just prefer the process worked as it was supposed to.
Can I just read you Tony's response on that?
Yes, thank you.
Be helpful?
Yeah.
Verbatim. "The middle school will receive mats that are almost identical to those being ordered, ordered, excuse me. They are currently housed in the high school, but the plan is to transfer the existing mats to the middle school. These mats are three years old, and the higher quality refers to their conditioned weight, ability to clean, ability to store, and ability to maneuver. The mats that the middle school currently uses will be sold, given away, or discarded." Does that clear it up for you at all?
No, but that's okay. I did read that. I'm still not sure where all these mats are.
I think at the end of the day, we have a really strong wrestling program. And if we have Booster Fund's money, as Dan said, I'm comfortable making a motion to move this forward in this meeting. We have a lot of decisions to make in the next meeting as well.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, so if you're comfortable making the motion, and you want to make the motion.
I will.
And it's supported.
Mike's got something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So go ahead, make, go ahead, make your motion, then we can have this in discussion, and then we can vote on it.
We don't have to vote 7-0?
Move to approve the purchase of wrestling mats from X-Flex in the amount of $30,000 as presented.
Is there support, Mike? Discussion, I think we've already had some, but is there any further?
Well, I just, I get my, I get my point of discussion is that there, that we got the information on Thursday in the agenda packet, and the request was for us to vote on it right away. And we're really, we're working hard to not get in that pattern. So let's not get in the pattern of voting on things right away. That's...
I apologize. I thought that we did it, I thought either was allowable, depending on the circumstance. And if the board, and so if, if the board wants it to always be presentation vote, presentation vote, I can make sure that that's what happens. I just didn't think that was a directive because of the way other things have come before you in the past. But I, you know, three months on the job, I may be wrong.
Right, right. Well, and I know that they've been needing these mats for a long time. I'm just, I'm trying, I'm sorry to make this into a big thing. I just don't want it. I don't want to get in a habit.
You want a pattern.
Right. I don't want to create a habit because we got to a point where we were for you, we're here, Vicki, that we were doing that. That it always seemed to be like, we got to vote on something right away, and we got to vote on this right away. And we're working really hard to not have to do that unless there's a, you know, unless there's, you know, unless...
Unless, unless there's a technology issue where we need to get something now.
Right, there's a reason we can either get it, the price or something, so.
I, I...
That's all I, I don't...
I appreciate the due diligence.
It's more about the process.
Right. And I appreciate the thought towards the process. And I think if we're going to take a takeaway here, that would be the way that we would prefer to see it in the future. Is that good?
Yeah, let's vote accordingly then and press on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, and we did nine. Safety and School Operations. And we, we did, yeah. We jumped around like playing hopscotch, but we, I got it all marked off here.
Yep, round 11.
And we did unscheduled audience, public comment. Unscheduled public comment. And now we're on item 11, Scheduled Activities. We have a Board of Education meeting on the 25th.
Oh, let's not go through them. They're right here.
No, I know. I know. I just, I just want to point out.
10:25.
I know. I want to point out the Board of Education meeting, so people don't, so it's the 25th, May 9th, and May 23rd, and June 13th and 27th. All right? Any clarification, Vicki?
No.
Final board comments, anybody?
May 4th, OCBS, the government relations thing, I'll be there, but if there's others that want to join me, let me know. Yes.
Anybody else?
As I talk to legislators, yes.
Okay. We have closed session. Make a motion, please.
I'll do it.
Go ahead.
Move to meet in closed session pursuant to Open Meetings Act Section 8K to consider security planning to address the existing threats or prevent potential threats to the safety of students and staff.
Is there support? Support, James? Any discussion? Go call vote, please.
Trustee Whitney?
Yes.
Trustee Summers?
Yes.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Secretary Reese, yes. Treasurer Hanser?
Yes.
Vice President Schaefer?
Yes.
President Di Alessandro?
Yes. Okay, we're going to close session.
10:24.
10:24. All right, we are back in open session at 11:24. Meeting is adjourned.